Good evening, welcome to the workshop session of Louisville City Council. We do have a quorum. Microphones are live, so they will hear everything in this room and then some. First up on the agenda is discussion of consent and regular agenda items. We'll go ahead and look into that, so council if you could pull over your packets. I've got invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Kelly. I have pledge to the flags from Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Ronicade. We have proclamation for the London Baker, Elizabeth Lane Rowe. We have proclamation for government communicators. We have recognition for Ruben Garcia and Erin Jeschke? Jeschke? Jes- Jeski? Okay, I'm over. Okay, good. Got it? And then we also have a presentation of a level three certified municipal court clerk. What I hear is there are just over 100 folks in the state of Texas that have this, and we have three of them. So that's pretty awesome. Item E1, public hearing ordinance amending the UDC.
Richard will be doing a presentation in open.
Okay, so we'll have a presentation with your staff on that one. Item 2, public hearing, special use permit for licensed massage therapy.
I did have a quick question about that. I was doing some research on this, and I couldn't find where Top Massage has any standing business with the Secretary of State site. I may not have looked that up very well, because the site was written like 1973 it looks like, it was a very bad day of the gun site. And I couldn't find any reference to the person who owned it, Miss Zai Pao. Does anybody know anything about who owns that building and who actually has license to occupy that space?
Yeah, her license is in the...
Her massage license.
Right.
But there's nothing from the Secretary of State saying she's a registered business or something I was looking for.
We have not...
Okay, I was just curious, okay. I thought maybe I just overlooked, all right, thank you for that.
It's still very clearly on several, let's just call it review sites.
Oh yes, I found those.
Oh, I did too.
I did not, I have no idea how that works.
It's good, don't go there.
So, all right, were you good with item 2? Move on to item 3, consideration ordinance Louisville City Council, standards of care. This is a standard, boy look like we have to do it with the state every year. Questions on that one? Item 8, public input. This one is specifically for public input regarding the current STR regulations and potential changes. So there's no action to be taken on this, it's just another touch point for residents to come and give their feedback.
No response from us, right?
No, we're just collecting data. Item H, consent agenda approval in the minutes. H5, amendment one of the interlocal cooperation agreement with Denton County, Texas. This is additional corporate drive monies. As you can see, we have scrambled cash up from all sorts of different ways to get this thing done, so great job on staff. Professional services between the city and Marathon Health. Questions on that one?
Is that the building new, it's behind the hover, over there?
Yes, that's right, we've officially opened, and this is extending our mental health hours, provider hours. You guys budgeted that this year.
Item 7, resolution of the city council designating several parcels of land within the city limits as public parks and trails. Including the naming, so this is follow-on from last council meeting where we approved the names. Item 8, bid award for the construction of Timber Creek Hike and Bike Trail, also to be known as Centennial Trail.
Is JV and Co. in business with Louisville City Council?
I don't know, Stacy, do you know?
I don't know.
I want to say a long time ago.
They're not a familiar name for me, but that may be a name.
Item 9, professional services agreement for project control on the animal shelter.
That can't happen soon enough.
Item 10, professional services agreement for design services for the shelter.
I had a question about that. This is just for the design, right? Over a million dollars for architectural piece, it just seems super high to me. Is that, is that the going rate right now?
That's pretty accurate, so what's the...
What's the percentage of the...
So what's the cost of construction?
I was going to ask Chris. Chris, what was the plan for the cost of construction total?
There's 1,000 subsides for the project, 200,000 of that for public park.
So 10,000 until 10%, it's within range.
Okay.
I didn't realize you're the wrong amount of work, honey, and you go.
Any other on item 10? Item 11, change order to our friends at the railroad.
I have a question about that. Sure you do.
I actually have David here to explain it, give a little bit back.
I do want him to answer her questions too.
Well, I just have a question about the numbers, because there's a, so there's a contingency, and then there's this CO. I understand some of the rules about when you have to have flaggers, and some of them are a little unreasonable, in my personal opinion.
Right.
So I do get that there's, toward the flaggers, it's 422, but is the CO itself, does it need to be for that full amount, or does it need to be for the difference between that and what is left in the contingency?
So basically, we have a contingency in every project. We don't have to come back to council as long as any of the cost overages are within that contingency.
Right.
So there's a, my understanding is there's a small amount left that we have for contingency that can go towards this cost, and so what you're approving...
So there's 301, 302,000 left in the contingency, right? And this one is for 422, but we're approving the full amount of 422 as a change order.
Well, I think there's 322 that's remainder left.
Right. So the... David, do you want to explain?
The 422 is after 301, or 302 is taken out?
The top, yeah, no, the 420, the 422,000 is the full cost of the change order. We do have a little bit of contingency left over, so that 300,000 number is how much we're exceeding the contingency by.
Yeah, about 100,000.
Really, the rule is any change order that exceeds that, we ask them to come back to the state council.
Right, but what I'm asking is, do we, I'm still, I'm still seeing it as, like, if we approve a change order for the full 422, then we have this contingency over here that we're not using?
No, no, we're, when we pay, when we pay the change order, we'll use whatever's left in the contingency amount, and then we'll have to add money to the project in order to complete the payments.
So the whole 422 plus the 302 is, then why do we have to approve the change order?
Because the change over has gone over, and in change over, we're not going to split the change, just from a records keeping standpoint, you're not going to change, you're not going to split out a portion of the change order based on the accounting. So the change order you're approving, which went over the contingency, is that 422, and then, but the funding is, we're just making up the difference of the funding, he's going to use the remainder that he has, and it's, so it's not going to be...
So the contingency is not necessarily approved as part of a contractor's contract? If they don't use it, they lose it?
It is, yeah, yeah, they would lose it, they'd lose it.
Okay, so what I, that's, what I'm asking is that, by, the way I read it was that they would get a full change order of 422, plus whatever wasn't used out of that contingency, they'd also get that too. So that's, okay, all right, that answers my question, thank you.
So one clarification to the previous item, so they're actually, the base fee is about 8%, but they're doing a bunch of additional services for geotech surveys, which is raising it to the million dollars, so that's the difference.
David, would you want to explain on this item, what's been going on?
Just a very high level explanation of what happened with this change order. The railroad requires that any time we're doing work within 25 feet of railroad tracks on either side, that we have to have railroad flag, and they have to be certified with all the flaggers. Our contract with Sun Construction hired a subconsultant to provide this flagging. The assumption is, of course, is that, you know, or at least the assumption even during the design of the project was, if you're within 25 feet of the tracks, then you have to have flaggers. And we were 25 feet either side of the tracks on the same plane. Well, this was a railroad underpass project, so what happened was, is they built the bridge, you know, the bridge is built at ground level, they grilled the pier, so basically the bridge is built underground, so all the work up until the time that they finish the bridge is all at ground level for the most part, so we have to have the railroad flaggers, we expected that. What happened here was, once they started excavating underneath the bridge, building the road, building retaining walls, building utility lines underneath the bridge, where we would assume that would not interfere with the railroad, they still required flaggers. So all that work that happened underneath the bridge, the road work, the landscaping, utilities, retaining walls, even though they weren't working anywhere near the tracks, we're way down below them, they still had to have railroad flaggers on site, and we had to pay them.
Been doing. And, and I know we talked earlier today, because this is a thorn in my side, but the regs with the state does not match up with this, and it doesn't say that. So, and, and the, the construction company hasn't ever run into this, they base it on 25 feet before. It says it in here in the backup, that this is, never encountered this level of flagging requirements before, and this level of flagging requirements isn't anywhere in the state regs. Is it just this railroad? I, I want some answers to, not, not to hold this up, but some, there's got to be some answers somewhere with our Tech Dot rep or something that can explain that. This is a money grab from one of our big bully bureaucratic...
This is coming directly from, this was the Nadya Pacific Kansas City Railroad, and they use a company called Trainsystems to do their inspections, and basically be their representative on the site, so it's basically Trainsystems directed our contract by flagging that we knew they were underneath the bridge. When you look at the regs, they're, they're a little bit nebulous, it just basically say within 25 feet of the tracks, or if...
It does, it says within 25 feet of the nearest rail, or what is specified in the contractor right of entry, the C R O E.
Right, and so, nobody anticipated that that was going to mean, even if we're underneath the bridge, where we're not bothering them. Because at that point, when we're underneath the bridge, by that time, the trains were already driving over the bridge, I mean, we weren't bothering them in the least.
Right, I mean, we might accidentally jump up there.
Well, yeah.
It's a money grab, is what it is.
I will say the difficult part is that, is the railroad companies are not beholden to us.
Yep.
And also, the work has been done.
Right.
So Sun had to, Sun has paid them, and this is to pay Sun.
Pay them for that.
Right. I mean, that's why I didn't want it pulled and stuff, but I'm still, I still want Tech Dot to answer that. I want an answer on that, because I think, I just don't think it's wrong.
Right, I agree.
I will be fine, Washington City Hall is the principal.
I do have, I do have Tamam Neshad with me this evening, he's with Sun Construction, he may be able to explain it maybe a little more detail.
Just tell me it's not a money grab, and you've come across this numerous times.
With you, I argued myself, three times with them, Bridge Farmers was the city representative on the project, argued with us one more time. Their issue, and what they were claiming is, if you're working under the bridge, if you have an equipment, you might hit the bridge with your, with your equipment, like your tracos, your loaders, and that might affect the structural integrity of the bridge. And they don't want the structural integrity of the bridge gets affected while there's tracks on top of it. I personally don't believe that's justified, but that's what they argue.
They need to clarify that in their own regs, yeah.
And at the end of the day, once we poured the concrete paving, they still required us to have it, and at that point, we said, we're not going to do it, and stop us, if you want to stop us, and they didn't, they let us. The last month, they let us just continue working.
So, just for the record, I mean, I hear what they're saying, like, the equipment might hit the bridge, but a flagger's not going to fix that.
No.
It's going to make zero difference, but whatever. I understand where you are, I'm right there with you, yeah.
Item 12, local project advanced funding agreement amendment with Tech Dot. Item 13, authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the construction access of Midway Branch Force Main.
Are any of those easements going to be difficult to get, or are those available?
It'll be an Aaron.
I don't think so. The hardest one will be the landfill, and that's just, it'll just take time, but I don't think we'll have to shoot.
Really, for a line of that length, that, like, there's what, only three landowners?
So corporate drive...
We intentionally aligned it with corporate drive construction, so that we would try to make this as streamlined as possible. If you remember, this Midway Branch Force Main project is incredibly important to get done, like, in a very quick timeframe, and so we actually intentionally aligned that for that reason.
We do have closed session.
Yeah, to nail on that item, we need, whoever makes the motion has to read the motion exactly as set.
Oh, yeah, on the last one.
On item 13.
Yeah, on item 13, okay. All right, item B, presentation on red, white, and Louisville event options. We are running probably a little less time than you anticipated, Mr. Crunkie, but I know you can do it.
Talk at fireworks be. Mayor, Council, thank you for the chance to talk to you about the red, white Louisville, our Independence Day celebration that has been held for the past number of years here in Old Town. On the Tuesday closest to the four, wanted to very quickly give you some, some history, if you're not familiar with it. Red, White Louisville started in 1991, didn't have that name, it was just called Louisville Fireworks. 1991, after the Vista Ridge Mall opened, averaged about 10,000 people, we had 18,000 one time, we were not prepared for 18,000, that was scary. We made some changes after that, but we had about 10,000 on site, about 30,000, some said as many as 60,000, but, you know, people count differently, that were scattered around the area to watch high-level fireworks. We launched them from the Vista Ridge Athletic Complex, there on Lake Vista Drive, right across from the amphitheater. There's the fireworks. It was a great show, it was consistently rated one of the top five shows in DFW, usually fourth or fifth, but still top five. But we started to lose our spot, because there were more buildings coming down Lake Vista Drive, the offices down there built, Horizon Health built, TIA Creft built, and our, our safety zone kept getting smaller. Where we went from, at one time, we actually threw an 18-inch shell up there, and then federal regulations said, no more of that, that's an explosive. We had six teams, then down to 13, like, they're all explosives, right? Down to 12, that's the point. Down to 12, where we got to where we weren't even able to do 12s, where maybe some 12s and mostly 10s. And at that point, from the mall to the launch site, the visibility wasn't great, and our show was not going to be a top-five show. So we hurriedly to other places. And we went to council and suggested some ideas, and ultimately council gave us direction to move it to Old Town and do a low-level show, which reduces your crowd, but the impact can be really good. And you'll see a picture down here on the bottom, that shows the fireworks in downtown, and some more here, this picture right here, coming from the courtyard and the roof of the grand. About 6,000 is the most you can get there, we've had a little more than five on one big year, we're usually between four and five. And that's in Wayne Ferguson Plaza, Church Street, the adjacent restaurants, when we're able to make that zone work, and the City Hall Plaza. So it's been a good show, however, we have some concerns. One of those concerns is, as I mentioned, fireworks is an explosive, that means they're combustible. They are designed to make fires, it's in the name. And unfortunately, when you throw things in the air that make fire, they land somewhere. And we've not had real problems with it, but fire department is always out there watching and checking, they've got the drone running and everything. This past year, not during the show, but during loadout, there was still, I guess, some sparks in one of the boxes, they threw it in the dumpster at the grand, and the dumpster caught on fire, we actually had a dumpster fire. So that increased our level of concern, that we needed to look at other options. So we've looked at them, you can see some other issues here, we do spend money to clean up, about $4,000 to clean up the debris that's left around the grounds, and there's still some that we miss, but we get all that we can. There's some impacts, negative impacts on fireworks, and the cost is going up every year for a number of reasons, and we don't expect that trend to stop. So we have some concerns, mostly it's the fire risk. Drones are a safer, environmentally friendly alternative, they do not, well, they, correct, they don't blow up, but they're not fireworks, they don't start fires. And, so we tried it out this past year, I mean, no debris cleanup, the fire risk goes down. We tried it out this past year at Holiday Stroll, to kick off the centennial, to have the drone show celebrate both the Christmas season and the centennial. I hope you all got to see it, here's some pictures of it. It was pretty awesome, very cool.
It was awesome.
Pretty awesome. Now, it is still one directional, just like the low-level fireworks, you need to be in front to get a good view. From the side, you can see, oh, something's going on, I don't know what it is, but it's cool. Same with the drones, you'll see colored lights flying around, and, but you all see the shapes as well, unless you're in the front. So that's the same with either of our options. We looked at a few options, and I want to tell you, we set these options aside, because I thought you might ask about them. We looked at Bill Weaver Arena, biggest problem there is capacity, and also parking and shuttle. We looked at Lake Park, same problem there, the park is very full during that time of year, and we wouldn't be able to empty it out, so it's already full, there's no place to park, there needs a shuttle service, we, we could make it work, but it would be extremely difficult and costly to do that, and there's no infrastructure out there at the park for it. Plus, we're about to rebuild that park in the next however many years, and so we don't want to get involved in that. We looked at just merging with the Castle Hills event, making that our official event. We did that when July 4th landed on a Tuesday, so the dates converged. There's some pluses, there's some minuses. One of the minuses is, they really want to keep that more of a neighborhood level event. Great show, it's really a good show, but they want to kind of keep it a little bit more insured, because of all the traffic in and out, and the parking on the streets. When you can't get out of your own driveway because there's people parked to watch a show, that's not a good experience. So we've set those aside, at least for the near future. So we looked at, for consideration, these three options, keeping the event date, which this year will be July 1. One is staying at Old Town, which you can keep exactly what we have if you're not, if we want to just accept the risk that's out there. But we also could keep the same structure and put in a drone-only show, or a hybrid drone fireworks show, we'll talk more about that in just a minute. Second option, move to railroad park. Pluses and minuses here, the biggest plus is, you can do a high-level fireworks show, normally 10-inch shells, probably not 12, probably 10 is the most, but you're viewing from the fields, so it's a great view, a 10-inch shell would look fabulous from there. We also could do drones, or you could do drones and fireworks, same, same situation there. It, we'll talk more about that in a moment also. And then the Vista is the third. Used to be Vista Ridge Mall, the Music City Mall, now it's the Vista. We could go there and do it again, we just can't do fireworks there, because there's not a launch site, even low-level fireworks, there's not a suitable launch site with a safety zone. We could do drones, and we found a place to do it, we'll show you in a minute, it's just, we have a third for a reason. So here's Old Town, we had the infrastructure in place, we have an operational plan that works, we know what we're doing out there, and it's gone very well, it brings customers into the businesses down there, we always go in and visit the restaurants during the event, before and after the event, just to make sure, and we sometimes have trouble getting into them, because they do very well. The public's familiar with it, and it ties into sounds of Louisville. Now, the challenges are, the fireworks have debris, if we try to address it and keep fireworks, a debrisless fireworks show is a lot more expensive than a regular show, more than twice as much. The same cost for a 22-minute high-level, or regular fireworks show will get you about six to eight minutes of debris loss, to give you an idea there. So we would not propose replacing the whole show, unless you just want to throw your money in the air and set it on fire. But we can do a finale after drones. The audience size is capped at six, I know, and if we have more development in Old Town, it's going to change from time to time, but most of viewing area is pretty well set. Wayne Ferguson Plaza, City Hall Plaza, we're not going to put buildings there, the other areas there will be. And then there is shuttle, we use some shuttle now, if we grow it any way, we definitely have to do more shuttle service. This shows you the area, here's the viewing space, it's all around here, here's where the fireworks is launched, that's the fireworks safety area, if we do drones, this is the drone area. You notice it's a bigger area, and it's a big area because the drones are moving, so if something goes wrong with a drone, it keeps moving, that's the law of inertia, and it keeps going until it lands somewhere. And so that's why it's a larger area, we specifically planned it where it would not affect...
Touching.
Then it would not affect the draft house, and not affect the restaurants, so that they would be able to capitalize on the event. Cost-wise, now this is based, right now we have 31,000 in the budget. If we go with a hybrid show, which is drones followed by the low-level fireworks, the total budget there is 59, so we're 28,000 short for doing that for this year's event. You can make this cheaper, if you go just drones, that 20,000 goes away. I almost touched it again. So each case, all three cases are going to show you what the highest cost is, but in all three cases, there is a way to make it lower if you want to take the level of show to a more manageable cost-wise.
Was the Christmas show also 200 drones, or is that bigger or smaller?
It was 200 drones, or 250?
Two, two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter, so almost 250. Almost 250. All right, move it to railroad park, very versatile space, it has bathrooms built in, it has concession stands, we wanted to use them, it does have some infrastructure, but not all that we would need, it has the largest viewing area, the three items we're going to look at. We would have to bring in power and stage if we have a performance. There's the potential of damaging fields, and we want to respect the fact that our fields are not there just to tromp on and have picnics, they're there for athletic events. There could be damage to the fields, if so, we'd have to repair those. We don't currently know what that could be. It might be nothing, it might be significant. And then also, because it's at the park, there's no adjacent businesses that would benefit from that, there's no restaurants, no patios, no bars, no gathering spaces. So people would have to eat somewhere else or bring their food, so you lose that connection to the business community. Launch from the ball fields, view from these areas here, program in this parking area, we are far enough away from the corporate drive path, and far enough away from the landfill, they're outside of the safety zone. So, safety-wise, that's a great location. Cost here, more expensive, because they have to bring infrastructure in, and again, this is based on both drones and the finale. If you just did the fireworks, then it's just the 20, if you just did the drones, it's just 25. You can flex it up and down if you want, but remember, if you look at this number, we're 38,000 short of doing this, but you could get it down to 18,000 if you said drones are enough.
If we just did fireworks, as a five-minute show, over 20,000?
Five minutes for the close proximity, no debris. Or a 22-minute with the 10-inch shells, for the same price, that's what I was telling you.
Yeah, thank you.
20,000, there's a big difference from the debrisless shells. The debrisless shells just scatter dust, apparently dust is okay. Move into the Vista, best traffic, best accessibility, you can get a lot of people in, you can get them out in a hurry, we've done it before, now after the event, there's a lot of crowd trying to leave, but 35 minutes later, they're gone. PD had this sucker down, we were good at clearing the space. The safety zone would allow a 250 or even 300 drone show, but not fireworks. You want to think it would draw business in nearby hotels and restaurants, I'll tell you our experience from when we had it there was, it did not. The restaurants along the highway told us they actually had a low night, because people were afraid to get too close, because they thought there'd be bad traffic. We can try to capitalize on that, but I can't tell you that'd be a benefit. Under the challenges, we would have to rent event infrastructure, the stage, power, and have to rent all that. Fireworks, again, not an option, traffic control would have to be needed, so it's going to have a more of an impact on streets and on police than some of the others might. And also, we have not talked to mall management about this yet, surprise, guys, if you're watching. We don't talk to them yet to see if they're even interested in this, even if they are, as council knows, we're looking at doing something at that site in partnership with them that would completely change what's there, so this is at best a temporary option. Two years, three years, eight years, I don't know, nobody does, but it's at best a temporary option. We would launch from backside, do the drones above the mall, this whole area, you can sit and watch, really here, all of this you can sit and watch. So a lot of space there, just no fireworks. This one, only a $16,000 deficit because fireworks is not an option. So, but you have to bring in the infrastructure, and that's why the 31 we have now would not cover it, even with drones, with drones only. Which raised me to my last slide, ooh, fireworks fast. So we've got the three options, again, this is the highest cost, if you are uncomfortable with the cost, we can eliminate the drones, or eliminate the fireworks and bring it down some. But right now, if we don't keep what we want, what we have now, if we want to try and address those concerns, we're 28,000 short on Old Town, 38,000 short on railroad, 16,000 short at the Vista.
I wanted to add one other thing, I know we're going to have to go in there. I think James hit on the, the fire risk, the other thing is the fact that with Old Town, we have a lower threshold for calling a fire, calling the fireworks because of wind. And so, as you know, this, a lot of you know that this year, we were at the point where wind was so high, we had thousands of people out there, and I was getting a call from Mark McNeil going, we're going to have to call it and send them all home. And I just, that's really one of the big things that prompted me to say, okay, let's just look at other options, or you guys say we're willing to take that risk of sending everyone home in a potential fire.
That is true. Drones also have a wind tolerance that is higher, with about 20 miles an hour, fireworks is usually 15. In Old Town, we aim for 12, 10 to 12. And twice in the past four years, we almost had to cancel.
You also run the risk when there are high winds, you don't get as long with a drone show because those motors have to work harder to hold them steady and their batteries run out.
Right. So wind is an issue no matter what you do. You're throwing things up. Thank you, Darren. For those who don't know, Darren Watkins is our special events coordinator manager. That's what I have, sir.
Do you want to come back in here?
Do you guys want to come, you want to come back right back in?
Sure. Okay.
Good evening. We're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. First up on tonight's agenda is the invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Kelly.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Join me in the pledge. The pledge is... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
All right. We have a few more minutes left of workshop, so I'm going to ask everyone in the audience to please have a little patience. We're going to go back into our workshop, discuss a little bit on some ideas on our Red, White, and Blue Festival, and then we'll be back out here for the rest of the agenda. So we'll move back into workshop. What are you thinking for budget?
I think...
I need you to put four of the... Okay.
I was going to say... No, my first thought is to just go ahead and eliminate the Vista component because it seems like it's, it's kind of, we have more steps to do. I talked to Ted about this earlier. I think, I do like the Railroad Park, although I think that's going to take some organization, like with that parking area, you'd have to get vendors and things like that and maybe work with TCTA to kind of, for traffic control, get buses there. That may help save some of the fields. But the Old Town, do not do fireworks. I'm like, the first year we did fireworks there, I remember that wind. I remember watching the fire, you know? I thought we were going to be three restaurants short at the end of that. So I would just suggest, if we stay in Old Town, which I think would be my first option, do the drone show. I like the fireworks show. I like Railroad Park as an option, but it seems like there's more work and more cost potentially.
I'm concerned about doing it at Railroad Park because it's so close to the animal shelter.
Oh, yeah. I hadn't even thought about that.
Scare the crap out of those dogs and cats.
I like Old Town with just the drones.
Just drones, not wind, the hybrid.
If you do this one and do just drones, not the hybrid, it takes $20,000 off of our deficit and we have an $8,025 left.
I really like the idea of doing a hybrid show, like three to five minutes for a finale. I really, I really love that. And if we, if the wind was an issue and we had to cancel it, at least we would still have a drone show.
Right. But we still have to pay for it.
We still have to pay for it, yeah. We'd have to figure out how to pay for it.
The accountant fee does not pay.
How do the fireworks, how do the fireworks hold up the ones that are the dust, the dust kind in the wind? But is it better?
It's the same. Same, yeah. You're going to be affected by wind either way you go on fireworks. Now, it's a shorter timeframe. You're going to, you're going to empty everything, the bag, in a short, in a short period of time, so you don't have as much in the air at any one given time with the wind, but it takes, it's a real quick fuse, so it'll burn out pretty quickly.
Propulsion's the same. The weight is essentially the same.
I'd be in favor of the hybrid version. I don't, I think these businesses and restaurants still need, I think they still need this attraction there. I mean, we just lost a restaurant today, so I think this is the hybrid. I don't think everybody's there yet about not having some kind of fireworks. I just don't see, yeah, I'm for it, but I just don't see that most of the public are going to complain there's no kind of fireworks. But the hybrid gives us the best option. Now, we don't have to worry about the wind. At least we got the, at least we got the drones.
Let me ask this. I agree with everything Seth said. I think it's too soon to just cut to all drones. I think we're too embedded with fireworks right now. I like that. So hybrid for sure. If we went to Railroad Park though, you mentioned that there's no food options. Could we bring in trucks, food trucks?
Even if you're using a session stand, you'd probably still have to have food vendors out there with, you know, six, eight thousand people on the ground.
Does that help offset some of that extra cost?
A little, but not much.
Not meaningful.
We don't get a whole lot out of it.
Okay. I can get behind Old Town. It's, I don't, I'd like to see Railroad Park eventually, but I can get behind Old Town.
Hey, you got consensus.
So the hybrid Old Town.
Yeah.
All right. I'm on air, I'm your counsel.
Thanks, Seth.
I'm on air. I'm talking to your folks.
What do I write?
$58,000?
It's a given. All right. We're going to come back into regular session and we do have a few proclamations, so these are opportunities to recognize some great stuff in our city. So first up, I have a proclamation regarding the London Baker. So for those of you who don't know, we have a, an amazing celebrity superstar in our town and she was actually recently on television. And so we'd like to give some recognition. And you all, for those of you who don't know, I have some fun with this. You all are going to hear the word whereas regular time. There's multiple paragraphs. If you go to one of those churches that does the call and response, you all are welcome to say whereas with me. So let's go. So whereas Elizabeth Elaine Rowe is the owner and founder of the London Baker, serving as head cake artist and cake engineer and architect specializing in cake sculpting and hyper-realistic cakes. And whereas the London Baker is an establishment that transforms cakes into immersive experiences to create a personalized dining experience that fulfills customers' aspirations through its delectable creations. And whereas, as a previous first-place winner, Elaine recently competed in a special all-star season of the Netflix competition series, Is It Cake? And whereas Elaine represented, or, I'm sorry, whereas her final creation was a five-foot tall cake designed to resemble a miniature dollhouse adorned with stained glass windows that illuminated the scene. And whereas Elaine represented the Lewisville community and the London Baker with a strong second-place finish in the competition. Now, therefore, I TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim Monday, February 17th, 2025, as Elizabeth Now, for those of you who don't know, she's not just cakes. She has amazing scones and other great snacks at the London Baker. So go there, have a brunch, have a high tea. It's awesome. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so, so much.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure. I wasn't prepared for that, but absolutely. Thank you, everyone, very, very much. And I hope that I get to see all of you at my shop. It is in Lewisville off of 121. Come and say hi. Don't be a stranger. If you like all things British, you'll love this place. So, thank you, guys.
It's awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Next up is Government Communicators' Day. Whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate, and engage their communities. And whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take actions and be involved. And whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions. And whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard. And whereas the City of Lewisville is proud to and has deep gratitude for and recognition for the government communicator's professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice. Now, therefore, I TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 21st, 2025, as Government Communicators' Day here in Lewisville. And if you could, engage with our communicators. Who are we recognizing? Where are they? Bring my communicators up here. Yeah, James, your team.
Thank you to Mayor and Council and to City Management for your support. And if you haven't signed up to get the email newsletters, you need to sign up to get the email newsletters. All right. Thank you.
The last survey of how we communicate with residents identified over 150 different ways that the city communicates with folks. Whether that's electronic, whether that's old-fashioned paper, whether that's water bills, you name it, we have a channel for it. And it's challenging in today's environment because there is so much pulling at our attention. These folks do a great job, but they're always looking for new ways to engage our community. All right. Next up, Aaron and Ruben. Do I have you guys? Come on. Come on. Bring your family. So I'm here to recognize a couple of our staff members. You guys, thank you. Appreciate you. When you work for a city, especially when you work for a city like Lewisville, it's all hands on deck. And that's part of the philosophy and how our culture is built. And so when we see employees that have that employee logo, the expectation is that they're going to go above and beyond when they're needed. And these two gentlemen did just that. In July 2024, Ruben Garcia and Aaron Jenzki, I'm over, I'm over reading that, of the Lewisville Parks and Recreation Department, demonstrated an extraordinary response during a critical incident on their route. When a vehicle caught fire in the left lane on Business 121, Ruben and Aaron demonstrated bravery and quick thinking by activating their truck lights to warn oncoming traffic, attempting to extinguish the flames, and contacting the fire department for assistance, thereby ensuring safety of everyone involved and preventing further risks. Their swift response, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to public safety are true reflections of the values upheld in Lewisville. In December, Ruben Garcia and Aaron Jenzki were honored as winners of this year's Team Lewisville Awards, a well-deserved recognition for outstanding service selected by the entire Parks and Recreation Department. I TJ Gilmore, Mayor of Lewisville, and on behalf of the City Council, extend a thank you and commend Ruben Garcia and Aaron Jenzki for their heroic efforts and dedication to making Lewisville a safer place for all. Thank you, gentlemen. Anytime, anytime. So folks, when you, when you see these folks out there, just give them a hand because they, they get beat up on social media a lot, our team, and they don't deserve it at all. Our city staff does an amazing job. And I get it, sometimes there's some inconveniences in the world and sometimes there's things that need to be fixed, but 99.9% of the time, these guys are doing all the right things every time and they're going above and beyond what they have to do. So I thank you guys for being that example. All right. Next up, item D, presentation of a Level 3 Certified Municipal Court Clerk to Municipal Court Employees. I've got Kay Minnis and the team up there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Administration. It's a privilege to be here tonight to recognize an outstanding achievement, an outstanding achievement within our court. I stand before you not only as the representative for Lewisville Municipal Court, but also as the Vice President of the Texas Court Clerks Association. Joining me this evening is Jennifer Bezorgne, the Court Services Director for the City of Irving and the President of the Texas Court Clerks Association. Together, we sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be here to celebrate a remarkable milestone. Out of approximately 4,000 clerks in the state of Texas, there's only been 149 certified court clerks in the state of Texas. And we're here to honor Kay for being that 149th Certified Municipal Court Clerk. Kay has dedicated six years of the city of, to the City of Lewisville and four of those years within the municipal court. I personally witnessed her unwavering commitment, perseverance, and dedication as she's tackled this rigorous, the rigorous requirements for the certification process. Her hard work and determination have now led to this well-deserved accomplishment.
But this achievement is more than just personal success. It's a testament to the dedication and expertise required to serve our communities at the highest level. Becoming a Certified Municipal Court Clerk demands extensive legal knowledge, mastery of the judiciary processes, and a steadfast commitment to professionalism and ethical service. This accomplishment also reflects the tremendous support and encouragement provided by this city, this leadership, and this community, a culture that fosters professional growth and development. Kay's success is Lewisville's success. Her expertise directly strengthens our municipal court system, ensuring greater efficiency, accuracy, and responsiveness to those we serve. It enhances access to justice, reinforces public trust, and ultimately benefits every member of this community. On behalf of the Texas Court Clerks Association, the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center and Texas State University, it's our great honor to extend our sincerest congratulations to Kay, Jeremy, and the City of Lewisville. Thank you for allowing us this privilege of being here tonight to present Kay Minnis with the Certified Municipal Court Clerk certificate and her plaque. Congratulations, Kay. We're so incredibly proud of you. Thank you for loving us.
All right. We're going to change the order just a little bit to try and optimize some time tonight. First up, I want to go ahead and move to item G, the Visitors Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name or address prior to beginning their remarks. Speaker will allow five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. For those of you who've already filled out cards, we're going to get to you all, not a problem, but if there's anybody here who was wanting to speak to City Council for the Visitors Forum, I do have a couple. I have Georgiana Bustos, if you wouldn't mind.
We're actually going around to different city councils to kind of explain a lot of what's going on with our school districts and how the lack of funding is going to eventually hurt our municipalities. So tonight I'm here because our public schools are at a breaking point. The challenges they face today will, if left unaddressed, affect our entire municipality because the correlation between strong public schools and a vibrant, healthy community is unmistakable. Public schools across Texas are in a crisis. Despite a 26% rise in inflation since 2019, the per-student basic allotment has remained stagnant at $6,160. Rather than addressing this, our legislators are using school funding as a bargaining chip for vouchers, which would divert even more resources away from our public schools. They claim there is no money, yet Texas has $21 billion in surplus for our public education. In 2023 alone, $4.5 billion in recapture was redirected to the state's general fund instead of being reinvested into our education. It wasn't put into our state's school fund. Almost $5 billion was put into a general fund that didn't come back. Restoring us back to our 2019 funding levels would cost just $9.3 billion. That's just a fraction of what's available. To me, it is completely unfathomable that Texas is the eighth-largest economy in the world, yet we rank 43 out of 50 for school funding. Here's what our schools need. An increase in the basic allotment of $1,600, which would be tied, and also tied to inflation. be tied -- and also tied to inflation. Funding based off of enrollment, not attendance. All recapture funds deposited into the state education fund and not our general fund. A no, and a firm no, to vouchers that take more money away from our public schools. LISD alone, I think, is looking at potentially another $20 million, just with vouchers alone. By raising the per-student allotment and tying it to inflation, our school districts can not only be solvent, but this single act would resolve the district's most pressing financial issues: $12 million per year in deficit spending for our special education. This includes everything from gifted and talented to our special needs students. $1.3 million per year in deficit spending for transportation. $5 million a year in deficit spending for our unfunded safety and security mandates. And $3.8 million to $4.3 million in deficit spending for our pre-K because the state only funds up to half days. This means LISD would be forced to deficit spend anywhere between $21.9 million or $22.4 million per year. A Rice University study found that 73% of our Texas schools are currently underfunded. 17% of those schools are severely underfunded with a 40% deficit gap. Anybody here can pay their bills with a 40% deficit gap? Please let me know. But this right now, this is the reality of our schools. What are they looking at? Foreclosure, bankruptcy, downsizing? And in fact, in 2022, LISD sent $60 million back to the general fund. Even after we're going to have a homestead exemption of $100,000, LISD is still looking at sending back $12 million to the general fund through recapture. And if anyone can do the numbers, a $22 million deficit and the $60 million that was sent back, we had the money. It was taken. If the state raised the basic allotment, fewer districts would be subject to recapture. The local tax dollars would stay in our communities where they belong. Funding public education should never be considered a deficit. It is an investment that strengthens our communities. And from here, I'm actually going to pass it on to my other lady who's going to read the second half of -- to Crystal.
Thank you for that. Crystal Tellez? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Crystal Tellez, and I'm at 721 East Texas Street in Grapevine, Texas. And I am here representing a group of parents all across North Texas in various ISDs. We've been working with the ISDs, and we're now focusing on working with our city councils. To take on from where Georgiana left off, a study in the Public Policy Institute of California found that a 10% increase in school funding over 12 years resulted in 7.7% higher wages for students later in life and a 9.8% increase in family income for those same students. Another study found that property values increase when school districts invest in their teachers and staff, which is 80% of Louisville ISD's budget. Strong schools lead to thriving communities. When schools lose funding, they are forced to close schools, cut programs, and leave academic needs unmet, which is already happening across North Texas, including just our local neighborhood ISDs. Every child is impacted. Their future opportunities shrink. And when our children suffer, our communities suffer. Why should our city councils care? Why are we coming to y'all? Because underfunded schools harm entire communities, not just the students. The ripple effects touch every aspect of our city, including our property values drop, shrinking the city's tax base and reducing funds for roads, parks, and essential services. Community reinvestment declines, weakening the overall quality of life. Career opportunities shrink, leading students with fewer paths to success. Higher crime rates, as demonstrated by the MBER Working Paper Series, which found that a 10% increase in kindergarten through third-grade funding reduced the likelihood of arrest by age 30 by 15%. We can already see the warning signs here in Louisville. In 2022, Louisville ISD was voted one of the best places to work, but by 2024, 70% of teachers are unsure if they can afford to return. If we don't act now, we will lose. Our communities will lose, and the cost of repairing the damage is far greater than preventing it in the first place. The City of Louisville is an amazing city today because of the work that you have done. And I know with confidence that you care about Louisville and its future. Schools matter. Families do not move to a community for the hope of a voucher. They move for the great schools, the family-friendly neighborhoods, and the opportunity to thrive. When we take that away, we all suffer, whether we have kids in school or not. Education matters. So let's make sure our schools get the funding that they deserve, because when our schools succeed, Louisville succeeds. I urge each of you to reach out to our legislators and emphasize the importance of increasing the basic allotment by $1,600 and tying it to inflation, not just as city council members, but as citizens of this great community. Additionally, I will be taking this message to Austin, and we would love for anyone to join us who can come. If you're interested, you can please reach out to me, Georgiana Bustos. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
City Secretary? Can you please make sure we have proper contact information for these two speakers? Because I'd love to talk with them afterwards, please. Thank you.
Sir, unfortunately, you can go ahead and reach out to the rest of council via email, but right now, our submissions for public speaking are full. I do have a card for Jocelyn McMurray. Sir, if you want to fill out a card, I've been told by my city attorney we can get you in. If you would like to fill out a speaker's card, we can put you in. Yeah, we need another one for this topic. My apologies.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Jocelyn McMurray, 1029 Stanford Lane in Louisville. My concern was the water outage that we had and the notification. I'm used to getting emails and getting telephone calls telling me, you know, when something is going on with the weather and things like that. But the map that was displayed on email was very unclear on how to figure out whether I was in or out of the affected zone. I just want to know if we could possibly enroll that whole system into what we're currently using as far as notification to, you know, citizens when things happen, why we can't put that into that same process? Because you have the zip codes, you have the email and telephone numbers. There should be a way that we should be able to act on that and share that information versus trying to look at a little map that had a line that, depending what kind of printer you had, determined how you could read it. So I just wanted to mention that. And again, everybody's number is on a speed dial, but I thought I would do this in a group meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief Sweet. Chief Sweet, can you go meet with her? Can you go meet with her to get her information about our response?
I'm going to keep this Visitors' Forum open. We have that one other speaker to come, but I am going to go ahead and -- for council, we'll go ahead and move to Item H, Consent Agenda. We'll come back to G. All the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and being enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted by the City Secretary. I do not have any requests for pulling an item from the Consent Agenda. So, council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Council, if you please vote. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to Item F. We'll keep Item G open. Item F, Public Input. We have public input for our short-term rental regulations portion on this agenda. We've asked folks if they would sign up to speak on that. It's Item F1. So I do have some speakers on this. This is just to gather input regarding potential ordinances on short-term rental regulations, potential future density restrictions, and/or potential limit on the total number of STR permits issued citywide. Cities seeking input for the public and council discussion regarding the effectiveness of the current short-term rental regulations, the adoption of density restrictions, how many STRs can locate, and/or the adoption of a limit of the total number of STRs permitted citywide. So we do have a few cards that have been filled out for this one. Wahin, my apologies. Morales? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
1325 Cedar Ridge Drive, Louisville. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you to defend fundamental rights, our rights as property owners to use and lease and manage our homes as we see fit. Free from overreaching government interferings, the Texas Constitution is clear: No citizen shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Yet across Texas and the county, local governments are trying to strip homeowners of their rights to rent their property on a short-term basis. This is not just an attack on property owners, it's an attack on the very freedom that our state and country was built upon. The recent ruling in City of Dallas versus DSTRA reforms that we already know. As homeowners, we have the vested right to lease our property, and any attempt by government to take away violations due to course of law protections -- I wrote this last minute, sorry, guys -- laws protections. The Fifth Court acknowledges that property owners have the right to rent out their property as they see fit. Also, limiting permits to property owners is not the correct way to do something like that. You should never limit -- property owners should not have more rights than another. So I don't believe Louisville should have the right to limit the property owners in a specific area to the amount of rentals that should be in a specific geolocation. If the City of Louisville continues to go out this route, I believe myself and other property owners do have the vested interest to pursue the same vested conclusion that the City of Dallas came to conclusion versus DSTRA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Jeff Woods, 1001 Forest Park Drive, Louisville, Texas. Good evening, Mayor, City Staff, and Council. Tonight I want to talk about the importance of implementing a density clause for short-term rentals in our city. As we have seen, the rise of platforms like Airbnb and VRBO has brought undeniable economic benefits from increased tourism to new income streams for homeowners and the city. However, without thoughtful regulation, these short-term rentals can also create significant challenges for our neighborhoods. The density clause helps strike a critical balance. By limiting the concentration of short-term rentals in specific areas, we can protect the character of residential neighborhoods, ensure housing availability for long-term residents, and prevent issues like noise disturbances and increased traffic. With too many properties in one area become short-term rentals, communities begin to erode. Neighbors stop knowing each other, schools lose students, and local businesses that rely on year-round residents suffer. Furthermore, a density clause helps stabilize housing markets. In cities without such measures, we've seen property prices and rents skyrocket, pushing out residents who have called these neighborhoods homes for decades. By capping the number of short-term rentals, we protect housing affordability and prioritize the long-term health of our community. It's also important to note that the need for reasonable regulations like density clauses and population caps is supported by legal precedent. In Higginell Stark versus the City of New Orleans, case number 2130643, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fifth District acknowledged the authority of municipalities to regulate short-term rentals in order to protect the public interest. This case serves as a reminder that cities such as Ulysses and San Antonio with longstanding density clauses have a vested interest in preserving the fabric of their communities while managing the impacts of this rapidly growing industry. This isn't about stopping short-term rentals entirely or infringing on property owner rights. It's about responsible growth and preserving the livability of our city in already well-established neighborhoods. A well-structured density clause ensures that the short-term rentals can coexist with strong, stable neighborhoods. Let's plan for a city that welcomes visitors while safeguarding homes for the people who live here year-round. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Name and address, please, sir. Brent Myers, 938 Southwood Drive, Highland Village, Texas. I also have a property at 1543 Chisholm Trail here in Louisville, which is a long-term rental, not a short-term rental, just to be clear. I'm here this evening to represent the Greater Louisville Association Realtors. As always, we're here to talk about preserving property owner rights. That's one of the things that we stand strongly for. We believe that homeowners should have the right to use their property as they see fit, including short-term rentals, as long as they don't violate the existing noise, safety, or nuisance laws. Restricting STRs in any form infringes on a fundamental property right. As gentlemen said earlier, we know that there are economic benefits to having short-term rentals. According to statistics from a used Airbnb analytics from their website, short-term rental market in Louisville has seen significant growth. As of April 2024, there were roughly 489 active Airbnb listings, with hosts earning an average annual revenue of $31,000. These rentals maintained a median occupancy rate of 61% and an average daily rate of $138. So we know that there's money coming in. That also relates to when those people come to town, they spend money at restaurants and other businesses as well as events. We are asking for fair and consistent regulations. STRs should be regulated fairly, just like long-term rentals and other property uses, rather than being banned or excessively restricted. Targeted enforcement of noise, parking, and occupancy rules can address concerns without taking away the property rights. Excuse me. According to the Community Impact Magazine, the city has already implemented an ordinance on July 8, 2024, requiring STR owners to obtain annual permits, pass inspections, and adhere to specific operational standards. So as Texans, we want to limit government overreach. Excessive restrictions or bans on STRs sets a dangerous precedent for government overreach into private property use. We believe that a balanced approach rather than heavy-handed restrictions respects individual liberties while addressing legitimate concerns from the community. I think the biggest concern that we have, and I would have as a Realtor, is the enforcement seems to be a little muddy as far as tracking, as far as penalties. And then if I have a client who purchases a home, who intends to use it as an STR and doesn't inform me, how am I supposed to convey that information to that person that then spends that money and turns around and owns an asset that they can't use? So we're wanting to make sure that we have fair regulation. We understand that there are items in place and regulations in place to help control those. We know there's a few bad actors in the area, and we believe that the companies that run those need to police that better. So we're just wanting to put forward that for the real estate community, we believe in the property rights and the use of those properties as that owner sees fit. Thank you.
Good point.
It's all right to be excited at public meetings. It's great. It's civic responsibility, right?
Yeah, being a citizen.
Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is Lauren Billings. I live at 1008 Vancouver Drive. No, I'm not normal. You know, with these meetings, it's really important to remember that we're a community, and we get the opportunity to speak in front of our elected officials and choose how we want our city ran. I like living here because it's a community. We get to come home, go grocery shopping, and go home and live. I don't know if you guys know, but some people don't get that every day. I come from a place, and in my family's history, it didn't start out like that. My mom had a dad, and he had two wives, and she shared the house with, like, seven sisters, two brothers. And when your dad has two wives, it gets two brothers, and when your dad has two wives, um, it gets really complicated and confusing. So us arguing over what to do with property seems, you know, there could be worse things. We could be, uh, picked up by a pterodactyl, you know? There are worse things in the world. Um, I find it very, uh, funny that we are having this meeting at the same time as the warehouse stuff, because STRs and warehouses, you're kind of running into an interesting sociological problem here. Um, I got my degree in family studies. What that means is I studied everything from the womb to the tomb, and this falls under the umbrella of sociology. My confusion comes from, you want this place to be a place of economic growth where you have warehouses, but you want to limit them on growing because people are living here while at the same time we're putting stops on how many STRs there are while trying to fulfill that economic growth. But if the warehouse people who are here representing the warehouses, they should speak up and say they don't want the STRs, or else where are their employees going to come from? Because having all these flighty individuals who are just coming and going for the tourism aren't actually going to be the people developing our economics. That's just a tiny, basic information from somebody who studied babies and death. Um, just a little bit of my two cents. But honestly, I love Louisville because it's not a crazy tourist trap like Frisco. There's a lot of lights there. And as much as I love you guys, y'all are not a tourist trap. My recommendation, and you don't have to take anything I say, I'm just a girl who studied a lot of stats, read a lot of research papers about babies, adolescents, and people behaviors that I could go into, that I don't really feel like it, and I got two minutes left. Look at your hotels and see how much they're booked up, because I know there's hotels in Louisville, that's where I put my mother-in-law. Um, see how much they're booked up, and I think that'll really give you a sense on if we really need STRs. And then you can also look at how many schools we closed last year, because I can also let you know from a family sciences point of view, a dying society looks like no children. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Nelson? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Matt Nelson, 1600 Highland Village Road, Highland Village, also a longtime Louisville resident and business owner and property owner in Louisville. Thank you guys for taking the time to hear these comments. My only comment is that no matter how, no matter what is decided, that there be a willingness to listen to extenuating circumstances and have an opportunity to make exceptions in the favor of new STRs. I'm an STR owner in other areas and other cities, and also have lived by STRs. And as everybody probably knows, it really depends on the quality of the owner. And I have a property in Louisville, for example, that I would like to apply for that, for an STR, that has no neighbors, it's a big house, a big lot, um, that I think that would help bring tourism to the area and not be a nuisance to any other neighbors in the area. So my ask is that no matter what is, is decided regarding STRs, that those extenuating circumstances be looked at on a case-by-case basis, um, that would allow STRs in that case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everyone who's come to give public input on that. It'll help us with our decision-making process. I have item G still open. Mr. Bullington? This was a comment you wish to make regarding school funding?
Yeah. My name is James Bullington. I live in the Colony. And I put my, both of my children through the L I S D school system. And it's different now than it was when I put my kids through there. In those days, when they built schools, the schools were moderate in design, you know, in affluence. Today's schools are a waste of money, a giant waste of money. These schools today that, that the L I S D builds rival office buildings. So if these ladies are wondering why there's no money, it's because your school district is just pissing it away. So, anyway, if the school districts want to improve their schools, they need to get real about the way they waste our money. So, yes, I like the school systems, I like schools, my kids, I have a daughter that went through the school system, and she's an attorney, okay? So the school system in Louisville has worked. However, it's not been working very well because L I S D wastes our property tax money, which the lion's share of our property taxes goes to the schools. Now, as these property taxes increase, we're going to run older people out of the state. We have some of the highest property taxes in the United States. And, and that is due to the schools. They build these big stadiums that 1% of the students use. They've gotten rid of most of the, um, uh, woodshop, automotive classes, that sort of thing, okay? We need to get kids back into construction. We need to get kids, you know, to stay in the computer stuff, but we need basic schools. We don't need giant three, four-story glass-covered schools to teach these kids. It's not necessary, it's a waste of our tax money. That's all I have to say on it, guys.
Thank you, sir. We do have a few other, uh, public inputs that I'm just going to briefly read into the record. I have a, uh, email from, uh, it's not Candace Welch, um, who is in, uh, against STR additional information. These, and these emails and whatnot can be found in the, uh, online packet, so I'm not going to go into the detail on them. I do have another email from, uh, Mr. Gary Ferguson, uh, who would like to see increased restrictions, um, on STRs. I have another email from Mr. Timothy Gorts, um, who, uh, expresses his rights as a property owner, um, and does not wish to see additional restrictions. I have a e-comment from Samantha Cuarto, um, would like to see the city implement a density clause for STRs. I have another email from Connor Tamlin. Um, oh, then that one moves into UDC, so that's a, that's a UDC one, so, okay. That's what I have for all of our STR comments, uh, in the record. All right, we're going to move into item E, public hearing. So public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance amending the Unified Development Code by amending Article 7, it uses parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distant requirements of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as Unified Development Code, by amending Chapter 7.3, supplemental use regulations, Section 7.3.24, manufacturing light intensity, manufacturing medium intensity, manufacturing heavy intensity, and warehouse distribution facility, to prohibit such uses from locating in a property within 500 feet of properties containing certain other uses without a special use permit, subject to certain exceptions, and amending Exhibit 7 dot 2 dot 3 dash 4, non-residential zoning districts, to clarify applicability of special use permit requirements for such uses in certain zoning districts. In the 1970s, the city of Louisville was aggressive in zoning for industrial development due to airport proximity. The prevalence of industrial zoning coupled with the cumulative zoning at the time resulted in many office, retail, and service uses developing within the light industrial warehouse and heavy industrial zoning districts. In several areas of the city, the market has evolved to the point where even developed properties are being considered for demolition and construction of new warehouse distribution facilities. This creates compatibility issues between these new developments and existing surrounding uses. In order to lessen the negative impacts on surrounding uses and facilitate improved compatibility between existing low, low-intensity development and potential high-intensity redevelopment, particularly in the LI, WH, and HI zoning districts, new supplemental use regulations for warehouse distribution facility in light, medium, and heavy intensity manufacturing uses enhancing setbacks, landscaping, and screening were adopted on December 9th, 2024, to further lessen negative impacts on and ensure compatibility with existing developments. Amendments to these supplemental use regulations are proposed that will require the approval of a special use permit for warehouse distribution facility in light, medium, and heavy intensity manufacturing uses located within 500 feet of lesser intensity uses. This requirement would not apply to buildings or structure with a current certificate of occupancy for warehouse distribution facility or, page 2, light, medium, and heavy intensity manufacturing uses. The SUP requirement will also not apply to existing planned developments. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6 to 1 on January 21st, 2025. Over the past few weeks, affected landowners have expressed several concerns related to the proposed regulations as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Should the city council desire to address some of the concerns presented by the affected landowners, it may move to approve the ordinance with some or all of the following amendments, subsections 7.3, 24, point A, point 1, point B, point 4 through 6, as follows. 4, a building or structure designated for a manufacturing light intensity, manufacturing medium intensity, manufacturing heavy intensity, or warehouse distribution facility use as designated on an engineering site plan in effect on March 3rd, 2025. Or 5, a building or structure, 1, designed for a manufacturing light intensity, manufacturing medium intensity, manufacturing heavy intensity, or warehouse distribution facility use as designated on a concept plan or engineering site plan for which was, for which a complete development application had been submitted to and accepted by the city and was under review by the city staff on March 3rd, 2025. And 2, which was subsequently built in accordance with said concept plan or engineering site plan as finally approved, so long as such finally-approved concept plan or engineering site plan designates the building or structure as designed for one of the above listed uses. Or 6, a building or structure which is less than 25,000 square feet. A new subsection 7.3, 24, point A, point 2, as follows. 2, when a change is proposed to a building or structure described in subsection 7.3, 24, point A, point 1, point B, point 1, point 2, and 4 through 6, that would require the submission of a new engineering site plan as outlined in section 3.4.3, the exception set forth in these subsections shall no longer apply to that building or structure. The former subsection, subsection 7.3, 24, point A, point 2, ran out of gas. Shall become a new subsection, 7.3, 24, point A, point 3. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above with the addition of the subsections as presented in the administrative comments above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke here, our planning director, and he has a, uh, presentation on the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Gilmore, and members of the city council. I'd like to begin my presentation tonight to just give you a very brief overview of zoning in Louisville and kind of how we got to the situation that we are in this evening. The map before you is our current zoning map, and the blue areas, uh, indicate our light industrial zoning district. So you can see today about a third of the developable land in the city of Louisville has light industrial zoning. Um, and the light industrial is one classification within our commercial zoning districts that are cumulative. And what I mean by that is that the lesser intensity, um, zoning districts and their uses are also allowed, uh, and I do have a graphic on the next one. As you go up the hierarchy on this inverted triangle, the uses carry. So the light industrial district also allows all of the permitted uses in general business, local commercial, office district, and medical district. Historically, for many years until about '22, the heavy industrial district also included all of those, but with the adoption of the UDC, uh, there were some adjustments made to limit some of that, uh, the, the nature of our, our zoning categories being cumulative. But I will go back to this map here. Uh, when this, um, zoning, this, our current zoning categories were adopted in the very early 1970s, you got to keep in mind, that's when Louisville was just starting to grow. Most of the development on the ground was just in the Old Town area. So at that time, this map looked very differently. There was more than two-thirds of the city was zoned light industrial. That was a, a strategy by the leadership in, in, in those days, um, to really be aggressive in the pursuit of industrial development. They, uh, they knew that meant, you know, jobs and tax base, and they really wanted to let the market dictate kind of where different land uses would get situated in the city as the city continued to grow. Most of the west side of the city, uh, west of I-35E, was zoned light industrial. Um, and just for reference, this map, uh, the, the areas that are yellow and brown are our residential zoning districts. The reds and oranges are, um, local commercial and general business. The dark grays are heavy industrial. Uh, we have very few, uh, properties that are, are zoned heavy industrial, and then the lighter grays, uh, indicate some of the special uses like, um, like our landfills. So like I said, in the early 70s, this map looked quite different. And so as the market demands in the 70s, 80s, and 90s was for single-family residential, so you saw a lot of properties be requested to be downzoned to residential. And that is why, uh, a large majority of the west side of Louisville was, uh, rezoned and ultimately developed to residential uses. And again, this is the, the hierarchy as I was showing of, of, that epitomizes what cumulative zoning is. I do have, uh, just to go back, one more point I'd like to make, about half of the areas that are currently blue, that are zoned light industrial, do not have light industrial uses on the ground. They actually have those lower intensity uses like office, retail, restaurant, hotel, and service uses. So about half of those areas, uh, contain those lesser intense uses. So moving forward, uh, do we do have some examples, or will we have some conflicts with the more intensity type uses with the, the lower intensity? Or areas like this example is the area in our southern gateway of the city near the intersection of I-35E and, and State Highway 121. Uh, you can see, uh, the mall is situated near the center of that map, and it is red. The developers of the mall did downzone that property to general business when it was built. But pretty much everything around it, which is kind of supporting, uh, development, um, of the mall that developed over the last 20 to 30 years, and it contains those, those less, uh, lower intensity uses. Again, like I said, the office, retail, restaurant, and service uses. And there's just an example of the shopping center that contains the Hobby Lobby and the Total Wine. This next example is an area, um, kind of northwest of our Old Town along I-35E. Uh, and as you can see, it has a, a very solid, single-family neighborhood to the west, that's west of Summit. Um, the artery on the south side is Valley Ridge, and as you can see, there's, there's two developments, a burning Valley Ridge there, that is Lowe's and, and Kohl's. So those are retail uses. But right behind those is the Norman Manufacturing Facility, and of course, that was allowed by right because of the zoning. But again, just to the north of that, you have the Kilo High School 9th Grade Center. Uh, so you've got a really, um, interesting mix of uses here with a lot of residential uses and a lot of, a lot of potential pedestrians, uh, and residential traffic mixing in with this industrial traffic. This is an example of an area along Business 121 and Southwest Parkway that has the light industrial zoning, but no industrial uses. So this is all service and retail uses in this area. In, in reality, should reflect more of a general business-type zoning as it is on the west side of, of Business 121. Uh, here's another concerning, uh, area. This is in, in southern Louisville, uh, south of Round Grove Road, where you have, um, an established neighborhood, single-family neighborhood, and then immediately adjacent, you have a, a distribution warehouse. Uh, city staff, and when you look at the map on the right-hand side, just for reference, in the upper-left corner is the Super Walmart, which is retail. Um, upper-right-hand corner is the distribution warehouse in this photo, and you see the gray area is the, uh, is the single-family neighborhood, and then the Mary Kay Manufacturing Facility is located on the left-hand side. And since, uh, Mary Kay and the distribution warehouse was, was developed, staff has spent countless hours, um, you know, working with residents, fielding complaints, working with the business owners, and, and, and trying to come to some workable solutions. Uh, but again, that is an ongoing thing because of the incompatibility of those two uses. Uh, I believe this is our final, um, example. This is in northwestern Louisville, along Gardner Ridge Boulevard. Uh, this is the McLean Trucking, which is a food service, uh, distribution facility. It was built, um, back, I believe in the, either late 70s or early 80s, when there was really no other development in that area. Everything in that area was zoned light industrial when they developed, but then the neighborhoods really sprang up around them and were downzoned. And now we have ongoing, uh, complaints with noise, uh, with truck traffic, and with, uh, just, you know, the fumes from the trucks. Um, it's an ongoing problem with, with the residents that live in that area, um, with, with the way that, that, that facility operates. And you can see from the aerial photo that they have a very high volume of truck traffic right in the middle of an established neighborhood. So the problem that we've identified is the fact that we have large areas of light industrial zoning that are now adjacent to either single-family residential neighborhoods or established commercial areas that were designed- commercial areas that were designed of, that have infrastructure that was designed for residential and commercial uses. The high demand for development, redevelopment for warehouse distribution and manufacturing uses threatens the quality of life for these existing neighborhoods and these existing businesses. So why is this a problem now? It is something that has been growing, but in 2024, we really reached a critical point of our development here in Lewisville. Lewisville has pretty much entered buildout. Some of the very last large vacant properties have been developed, especially those that would allow development of manufacturing and warehouse type of uses. Also, of course, everyone remembers COVID. Economic trends after COVID have continued to weaken retail and office developments while really increasing the demand in need for industrial type uses. And with that demand comes, you know, a demand for higher land prices. So this really created and invert that traditional economic model that our cumulative zoning was based on. The economics today support redevelopment of that existing retail and office sites for warehouse distribution and manufacturing. So the goal of these amendments are really to ensure that new or expanded warehouse distribution facilities and manufacturing facilities are compatible with surrounding uses and that there is adequate infrastructure to support all of them. So the solution lies within the amendment set up before you tonight. The first is that all new developments containing warehouse distribution and manufacturing should not be within 500 feet of those lesser intensity uses. And if they are, and in many cases they will be, then a special use permit can be requested. And this is a little bit about special use permits. That is a zoning process where we look at each site on a case-by-case basis, look at the surrounding environment, and first determine if there are any negative impacts that are potential. And are there some solutions that might lessen those so that there is a greater degree of compatibility? This is a process that we have had in place now for about 12 years now in Lewisville, and the city has literally approved well over 100 different special use permits for a variety of different uses. We've been very, very successful in this. City staff works hand-in-hand with the development community to really come up with some really innovative solutions so that there is compatibility at the end of the day when these developments do occur. The SUP process, as I mentioned, can be used to review each site for compatibility and for infrastructure needs. It can also be used to incorporate potential mitigation measures to, again, reduce those negative impacts on surrounding properties. So as far as our public hearing process, this item was discussed by the planning zoning commission twice, and they did receive public input. The first was a public hearing on January the 7th. At that meeting, the participants at the public hearing raised concerns about, you know, filling their spaces with tenants and the potential of having to get new SUPs each time they have changes of tenants and that, the length of that process. The PNC did close that public hearing and tabled the item to give staff a little bit of time to draft some additional language. So on the 21st, PNC recommended approval of an ordinance that had revised language that provided exceptions for buildings with manufacturing or warehouse uses as of March 3, 2025, as shown by a certificate of occupancy or a plan development for those uses. So it's basically providing an exemption in those two situations. There's also provisions that if there is really no CO on record, and that does occur in quite a few businesses here in Lewisville, the planning director can use other means to determine the actual use as of March 3, 2025. And so with those exemptions, those buildings then would be exempted from the 500-foot setback so that they could switch out uses moving forward. But one unintended consequence there was the fact that then they would still be allowed to expand if they choose to. So since that time, we've had additional concerns relayed to staff from stakeholders about their impacted properties. Again, the issue of re-tenanting buildings that might be designed for warehouse distribution or manufacturing, but they may have a different permitted use in a space for a short time. It's very, also very common, often we'll get like a service use like a plumbing company or an electrical supply company that may occupy a space that was originally designed for manufacturing or warehousing. So that could create some problems down the road where they want to go back to the original intended uses of the property. We also have probably about 10 or 12 projects that are under construction that have already gone through the process and were originally designed for manufacturing or warehouse. And the problem there is that those projects will not be completed and will not have a CO by March 3, 2025. So they would be legally conforming once they are complete. Then there's also another concern is a very large percentage of the small businesses that we have, particularly surrounding our Old Town area. And those are small-scale buildings that support local mom-and-pop businesses and small entrepreneurship-type businesses. They are much smaller in scale and don't really have those impacts that the large 100,000, 200,000, 500,000, 1 million square foot buildings have. They don't have the truck traffic or the impacts that those larger structures do. So with that, staff is proposing three additional exemptions. The first one would also add, in addition to the CO, it would add an exemption for a building that basically has a engineering site plan on file and current as of March 3, 2025. And that is a fairly good measure because staff has engineering site plans on file going back to about the late '80s for most of the developments since the late '80s. We have engineering site plans on file, and those are readily available to determine the uses. The next one addresses projects that are in the development process. So if they have been in the process and subsequently complete their project in accordance with their finally approved engineering site plan, then they would also be exempt from the 500-foot rule. The final exemption that we'd like to add is for the small-scale buildings. So those are buildings that are less than 25,000 square feet. So we do have three images here on this slide, just to give you a reference on building size. The image on the left is from the, kind of the business area on North Cowan, just in our Old Town North area. The building highlighted has 19,338 square feet. So it's a, it's a smaller building. It would meet that exemption for the 25,000 square feet and under. The middle image is also the same image on the right hand, but the right hand is just blown up to give you a little bit more perspective. But the, in the middle image, the smaller building is highlighted. It contains a little, a little over 20,000 square feet, and you can see it has a very small area for truck loading and unloading at the rear compared to the building that's highlighted next door in the image on the right, which contains 41,000 square feet. And you can see it has multiple truck docks in the back. So with the size, kind of grows exponentially is the impact. And again--
Richard, can I just clarify? Can you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
So on that last picture, so although that does not meet that exception for the size, that building is a more recently built building, would have an engineering site plan, I would assume?
That is correct.
Could fall under another exception. So this isn't saying that an SUP would be required for this one, it's just showing you the size.
That is correct. We're almost kind of providing several different options to potentially achieve those exemptions. And again, just to kind of go really quickly through these six images, just to kind of give you a comparison on size, we have up in the upper left-hand corner, the recently completed building at the corner of Edmunds Lane and Business 121. That building contains 48,000 square feet. The top middle is on Business 121, east of the Elm Fork of the Trinity River but west of Huffines, and it has 26,000 square feet. The upper right has 23,000 square feet, and that's located at the northwest corner of Huffines Boulevard and Riverview Drive in our Riverview Industrial District. The lower left contains 27,000 or almost 28,000 square feet, and this is on North Mill, just north of the rodeo grounds. And then the bottom row in the middle is in our McKenzie-Hemery neighborhood just to the southeast of the core of Old Town, and that building contains 16,000 square feet. And then finally, the bottom right contains 20,000 square feet, and that is located on the south side of Business 121 between East Main and Valley Ridge Parkway, or Valley Ridge Boulevard. So the final concern, though, with these expanded exemptions is expansions. Many existing and under-construction buildings are designed for these uses would be exempt. So that would also include the ability to expand. So warehouse distribution and manufacturing uses could come and go with a certificate of occupancy under those granted exemptions, but they would be allowed to expand. And therefore, we're kind of going back to the concerns of the incompatibility of uses. With additional exemptions, staff recommends adding that any expansion of existing structures that triggers the submission of a new engineering site plan be subject to the 500-foot distance requirement from less intense uses. So that what this would do, this would allow review of expansions and new development for appropriateness and for infrastructure support through the SUP process. And again, that SUP process can be, can be built into the development and engineering timeframes, therefore addressing the concerns about the timing that it's going to take to get an SUP. The SUP process could go concurrently with the engineering site plan process, therefore not really adding any additional time. And we have done that in many instances in the past with developer projects. And again, this is just an overview of the wording for, this would be the first exemption relating to engineering site plans. And then moving forward, our notice, did want to briefly touch on the notices that were required. We had two rounds of postcards that went out to over 2,400 property owners and real business owners, and those are folks that have property or businesses in the light industrial, heavy industrial, and warehouse districts. We also had probably around 10 or 12 that had these uses, but they were not in those districts. So those are, we were required by state law to provide those postcards with that very alarming and ominous language on there. But it did work, and it did get the attention of a lot of our stakeholders. Like I said earlier, two PNC meetings were held where we received a really good amount of input. The publishes were also, notices were published in our, in the newspaper prior to each of our public hearings as required by the state of Texas and by our code of ordinances. And planning staff received well over 200 inquiries from various property owners and business owners in the form of walk-ins, telephone calls, and emails. So planning staff has been extremely busy over this last month, having conversations with business owners. I also wanted to point out, as far as the notification requirements with the postcard, the blue area, the blue properties outlined on the map indicate the properties that received the postcard, the 2,400 properties. We received approximately, actually, it's the properties in red, it was about 49 properties that we received written opposition from. So that represents 6.99% of the total notification area, and then the 49 property owners just numerically represents 2% of the total numeric number of property owners, well under the state law requirement of the 20% rule. If we had received more than 20% of opposition in either of those categories, that would have required a supermajority vote of the City Council to approve the ordinance approving the amendments, or three-quarters vote.
If you would have sent that stuff out in proper stationery, you would have more input.
And this final slide, again, is just a recap of what the mayor read in the caption, and so this is, this is the additional language that staff is recommending, the three additional exemptions, and then the statement that clarifies that any, anything, any change on a property that triggers a new engineering site plan would require the 500-foot setback to the lesser intense uses, which may kick in the requirement of a special use permit. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions of the City Council.
Council, any questions or comments?
Richard, so I know there was an issue, can you hear me? Is this working? I know there was an issue with the legally nonconforming status. If somebody meets, if we approve an exemption and you meet that exemption, does that make you legally or conforming?
Legally conforming, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Richard, I have a few things as well here. So first off, you did a great, thank you for the presentation, that's fantastic. I know that you guys worked really, really hard to try to make this fair and equitable, so I appreciate that. You'd mentioned this was done in the early '70s where we had all this zoning was set up to be light industrial. I think it's important to give context, what was going on in the early '70s. So there was the OPEC embargo, there's stagflation, there was high unemployment. So that, all that stuff is going to, is going to set a context for why I think there was that sort of development encouraged at that point in time. You also mentioned that it used to be much more, so we see we have a history of going through and rightsizing this across time, right? So we have a history for this. So we do have a couple of questions for you. One of the emails that we got, it asked about the COs. There wasn't a standard, they don't all say warehouse and light industrial, so it requires a review of a impartial person to go look at that and say, yeah, that looks like warehouse, is that right?
Yes. We've been, there was a fairly long period where COs were not issued. We were really using a different type of system. Then about 2019, we instituted that process, and for a good while, the actual building code use was listed. And about a year ago, we started listing the actual zoning use. So that is not impossible, but we can look at each one on a case-by-case basis with additional information to determine what the use--
Try to reconcile those back to a normal, a normal usage context, is that right? And then, so we mentioned that, maybe I didn't understand this, but the 25,000 square-foot buildings, is there anything that prevents somebody from putting up four of those in one area?
Typically, a site plan, if you may, is, it's really based upon a platted lot. You might have multiple buildings, but usually you look at that cumulatively, multiple buildings on a given lot.
Okay. So we think there's ways to prevent abuse of that particular carve-out?
Correct.
Fantastic, okay. And then, let's see. I think that's everything I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council? All right. I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to read all of our ecomments, and then the folks who signed out cards or filled out cards but indicated that they did not want to speak, I will read those into the record as well. And then we will get started with those who chose to speak on this issue, either for or against. So I appreciate your patience and your time, and we'll move through this process. I do have a comment from Connor Tamlin, owner of two buildings in Lewisville. He opposes the proposed amendments to the UDC. At a minimum, he'd like to have more time. I have an e-comment from Nana asking about the grandfathering provision, does it run with the land or the landowner? Richard, do you have a comment to that? If the grandfathering provision runs with the land or the landowner--
The exemptions typically would run with the land.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a comment from Glenn Watson stating that he's got some small multi-tenant and that those uses should be interchangeable unless going to a heavier use. So those are the ecomments there. And then I have CH Realty has submitted in opposition to the ordinance and given some red lines and changes there, so appreciate the input there. I have opposition from Box Investment Group with their responses to the documents. I have opposition from Munch Heart, Ms. Angela Hunt. Thank you for reaching out to council and giving your feedback as well. I have a comment from the Billingsleys, Lucy and George Billingsley, and their concerns about the SUPs as well. I have a letter from Trailer Investment Jones Street LLC in opposition to the ordinance. I have a letter from Trailer Investment Jones Street LLC in opposition to the ordinance. I have a opposition from Leatherwood Plastics and their opposition to the ordinance. And of course, these are all on file with the city secretary's office. I have an opposition letter from the Vossberg Family Properties. I have an opposition from Vista Ridge Property LLC. I have an opposition from Prime Development Capital. And I have opposition from Kent Real Estate Investment Company. I have an email from Michelle Sickles, who is in support of the additional regulations. I have an email from East Group Properties in opposition. And then the following folks are, came here tonight and filled out cards stating that they wish to voice their opinion on this but did not wish to speak. I have Michael Mahoney, who is in opposition. I have Teresa Rather, I'm sorry, Michael Mahoney from Barfneck Lane in Lewisville in opposition. I have Teresa Rather from Woodland Boulevard in Flower Mount in opposition. I have Brian Guermont, Centurion Court, Dallas, Texas in opposition. I have Bob Guermont, Flower Mount in opposition. I have Manny Jacobs, Mill Street, Lewisville in opposition. I have Andrew Bowman, Windchase Drave, Flower Mount, Texas, opposition. Charles H. Bush, Farmer's Branch Lane and Farmer's Branch in opposition. Rama Kediala, and my apologies on the name, Peacemaker Drive, Frisco, Texas, opposition. Josh Allen, Cornell Way, Frisco, opposition. Daniel Box, Harwood Lane, Dallas, Texas, opposition. Ed Keppner, Jane Haven Lakes, Cleburne, opposition. I have Ton Marchari, Santa Maria Lane, Dallas, Texas, in opposition. I have Tom Torcellini, Railroad Street in Lewisville in opposition. Paul Basolo, Lewisville Railroad Street, also in opposition. And I have Dixon Rich, who was here originally to speak, but ran out of time, so representing his opposition as well. I also have Ms. Patty Gusek, Office Park Circle in Lewisville, who is in opposition. I now will go ahead and move into those of you who have signed up to speak. We would ask that you go ahead and keep conversational. We're all trying to figure this out, as you could hear, so we appreciate your input and feedback, and so that's why we have it. So first up on the list tonight, and we're just going to keep moving through this, in the interest of time, y'all, if you want, you can take all your time, you can also say ditto. So it's entirely up to you how you want to manage the time tonight. But we will ask that everybody stay with the clock that we have because we need to be able to get through all the speakers tonight. First up tonight is Mr. Robert Allen. And if you could, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Robert Allen. My office at 5310 Harshill Road, Dallas. I'm the regional director for First Industrial Realty Trust. First Industrial owns an industrial park called First Park 121, located there, kind of northeast side of Lewisville, kind of just south of Midway Road, kind of east of Holford's Prairie. You know, First Park 121 is approximately 117 acres. We acquired the property, you know, through two acquisitions, 83 acres initially, then 34 acres. And we acquired the initial 83 acres, we had to rezone the property from agricultural open to light industrial. And when we went through the process, kind of was brought to our attention that the property was actually, not just the initial 83, but the other 34 acres, it was all actually when the city of Lewisville, I think, went through kind of a land use plan in 2014 for Lewisville 2025, that the property was identified as suitable for an industrial park. So we were able to successfully get the property rezoned, and since the rezoning, you know, we've made a significant investment in that property. You know, we've developed five industrial buildings, you know, warehouse distribution, light manufacturing buildings. You know, we did it over three phases from 2018 to 2022, invested approximately $80 million. You know, currently, on Denton County Appraisal District, they're appraised at, you know, for 2024 at approximately $100 million. So again, a significant investment on our part. You know, and currently, over the last two years, we've been working with, it's mainly an engineering exercise, but we've been working on trying to add a sixth building there, and there's a lot of challenges as far as floodplain and creek crossings. And we're probably, or we're probably, maybe, we'll see what the outcome is, we're about 30 days away from potentially getting a permit to build a sixth building on the property and invest somewhere in the neighborhood of another $15 million into the city of Lewisville. So I would say that, you know, over these years that I've worked on this project, the seven years, you know, I guess I'll, you know, reiterate what, you know, kind of Mayor Gilmore said, I mean, the staff has been great. I mean, really, our experience with the city of Lewisville has been, you know, really significantly better than a lot of our other cities that we've worked with, you know, over time. I mean, you know, staff is very responsive, very reasonable, and really appreciated the relationship, which frankly made it really, really hard when I got the notice on January that kind of detailed that the city was stripping us of our rights to, you know, use those properties, to lease those buildings moving forward for their intended uses, for warehouse distribution buildings, and for light manufacturing. So, you know, it's very concerning, you know, I'm here in opposition of the UDC changes, but if the city, if council, you know, decides that they have to do something, you know, just appreciate consideration of approving the additional amendments that Richard identified tonight. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Bryce Hafner.
I'm sorry, I have a quick follow-up question, a quick clarity from Richard. So warehouses that are already on property, there's no stripping of rights to those, right? I mean, they're grandfathered in?
That's correct. They would qualify for the exemption, either the COs, or if the additional language is approved with the engineering site plans, then all of the buildings that Mr. Allen described would meet an exemption and would be legally conforming moving forward.
Okay. I just want to double-check that, because there has been a bit of a moving target as we've been trying to be responsive, so I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah, and sorry, it's kind of been a moving target, and I think there's still maybe a little bit of confusion. So I'm not trying to create misinformation, and Richard's been great working through this.
Me either, that's why I wanted clarity, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bryce Hafner? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Bryce Hafner, 6125 Luther Lane, Dallas, Texas. I'm glad the heat is working tonight in this room. I am here in, on behalf of the Movie Eight Movie Theater Redevelopment Ownership Group. We actually were here on January 6th to get our final city council approval for one design alternative standard, which we received. We walked out two high-fives to the police officers who were excited that we were getting rid of one of the city's big blights. It was vacant movie theater, closed about four or five years ago, welcomed homeless people, vagrants, crime, you name it. If you go on Google Earth and you drop the pin, you'll see a homeless man having a shower behind the building, naked. So we came to the city of Lewisville knowing that it was pro-business, easy to work with. We were excited to close on our land that was zoned light industrial in August of this year, proceeded with city staff to get every approved. And so it was to our big dismay to hear that the night after our approval, there was a vote to strip our rights for light industrial. Right now, the buildings are contemplated to be warehouse distribution or light manufacturing, we do not know. But with the current proposed language by P&amp;Z, that project no longer becomes viable from a legal non-conforming standpoint, use standpoint, and, you know, it probably ends where it is. We have worked, we have stayed committed to our statement, we have already demolished the building, we are demolishing the paving, and we are, we would love to proceed with the redevelopment March 3rd. But with what was approved by P&amp;Z, that is at risk. And so I guess our plea is that if the city is adamant on proceeding with the amendment to the UDC, that you do accept the proposed staff recommendations of inserting the designation of an engineered site plan or consent plan as being exempt from this zoning change, that would help us a lot. I guess my one final comment would be, I feel that logically there might be an easier approach to this zoning change. If the city is concerned by future redevelopment, then there should be a targeted approach as to looking at the areas you do not want to be light industrial and change that, and not just a blanket statement of impacting all the industrial owners in the city. But that's it. Thank you.
Richard, quick question. The exemptions that are on there, that takes care of its business, correct?
Yes, the exemptions as proposed would cover this project.
So we're not taking away rights? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bring that on. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Lucy Billingsley, 1722 Ruth Street, Dallas, Texas. We were, one of the letters that was shown up there is with great concerns, and we have six buildings, a million, 100,000 square feet of industrial space in the city. With the amendments that are proposed, we are able, with them acceptance, to change our status from one of concern to one of support. What these amendments do is they preserve our original agreement with the city. They permit us to operate as we had all intended. And importantly, they permit us to work with our lenders with the same commitments that they had made to us, so it preserves that integrity. So we just wanted to thank the work of Richard and the staff, and the sensitivity of the city to these existing issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billingsley. Marion Southall must be present to win.
My name is John Delvec, I live at 769 Windermere Way in Keller.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for the chance tonight to speak about this amendment. I come to you humbly tonight and try to speak simply, as I am a simple person, but I'm very much against this, mostly because it's not ready, it's not fully cooked. I've had many hours with our attorney, who is not a simple person, and has come up with all kinds of things wrong with it. So I'm going to try to walk you through what those are. If the city would like to have my help or our council's help to try to get this right, we'd be glad to help you, even though we're against it in general. So the first thing, even though I said I was humble, maybe I should give you my credentials. I've been an industrial developer for 35 years. I've built over 33 million square feet of light industrial, light manufacturing space. I've done multiple buildings in the city of Lewisville, including one that was on the screen that a lot of time was spent on. And everyone here has driven past at least one building that I've been developed, that I've developed in Lewisville, have under contract, am looking to have under contract, or have in the ESP process right now. So the first thing that I really would like to touch on is, who are the owners of these industrial buildings? So this works for a company that's coming from New Jersey, they're in love with Lewisville, they want to move here and to build their industrial building, they go to the economic development folks, Lewisville's like, yeah, bring it on, bring on the jobs, and you come on, and you go, hey, we're going to go through this SUP for you, we know you have a little retail store in the front, that's an additional use other than LI. So that's what SUPs are for. They're for additional uses beyond what's in your zoning district. So a retail store or a will-call center in front of an industrial building is very common SUP in cities across the country. Here, you're already zoned light industrial, which is what I'm going to focus on. So that includes office, it includes the example that was given about the people who work out of the warehouse and have some things going on back there. But these buildings are not owned by that mom and pop that wants to move in one more business down here and is going to come before you guys and ask for approval on this SUP. These buildings are invested by, bought by, and owned by companies that are teachers' retirement funds, would be the second-largest ownership, teachers' retirement funds, we all love teachers, whether we want school choice or not, and it's a, you're messing with their retirement. The second-largest, no, the largest ownership is probably industrial REITs. If you own 401Ks or mutual funds, you're a large part, and the most stable part of your investment is an industrial REITs. So that's a, you're messing with your own money. The third investment type, and also one of the largest in the world, not just industrial, is actually life insurance companies. So these life insurance companies have invested in these properties to, for basically widows and children, widows and orphans. So we're messing with them, that's their investment. It's not the evil real estate investor development guy who's tearing down trees next to a neighborhood. Let's talk about that for a minute. I live next to, my home is next to 25 beautiful acres in Keller, right in downtown Keller, you can see it on the map. There's a tighter use, there's higher-density homes that are slotted for the land next to me. I knew that when I bought the property. That's not the landowner's fault if he sells that and they put higher-density homes there. I also lived in a neighborhood that had retail and other uses bordering it. I found that out, my Realtor told me. Where is everybody in Lewisville's Realtor telling them what the zoning is next door? Further, these industrial is the highest and best use for this LI-zoned land. The only other one, and I see this all across the country, especially Florida, is apartments. You want more multifamily in Lewisville? Vote it in, staff is going to be inundated with multifamily resuming requests. That's the other thing that comes in. As for the actual rules, if you'll give me a second, the first paragraph, no portion of the property containing manufacturing light industrial, blah, 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 is allowed within 500 feet. It's got some rules here below it. One of them is not an SUP. There is an SUP section in your code, and SUP section has been amended on the table.
Mr. Delvec, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's been amended on the code, but the amendment tonight does not point to the actual SUP table. And so in legal presence, employees reverse to, was written, not a table.
Next presenter, Mr. David Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. David Hicks, 705 Johnswell Court, Argyle, Texas.
Thanks, sir.
I'm with East Group Property. I am the senior vice president, handle our operations here in DFW. We are the owners of Creekview 121, 10-building business park that we developed on a couple parcels of land, generally at the, eight buildings at the intersection of Leora Lane and 121. And then just about a half-mile west of there, our final phase was around the, I believe it's the 2,300 block of 121. So our light industrial buildings that we purchased and developed in, these 10 buildings total about just under 800,000 square feet. They're leased to about 18 unique tenants, and in that... And in that, we have about over 500 jobs we've created with those assets, along with an estimated $2.6 million in tax revenue. So along with some of the other ownerships that have come up, I'm opposed to this, but with the caveat that if it is a must, the language in the amendments that have been proposed, and Richard was kind enough to call me last week and walk me through some of those as a concerned property owner, and those would actually significantly help our business and exclude us from those. So, we are a public REIT, which is one of the asset ownership classes that the previous speaker mentioned. And so, our ownership spans across Sunbelt states, about over 60 million square feet. So we do this for a living and we're long-term ownership horizon. We love being in Lewisville. When we developed these properties between the years 2017 to, I believe, 2022, we did it in five different phases of two buildings. So as we developed a couple buildings, we would build as they leased up the next ones. And we're quite successful on these industrial zoned properties. So we're just, think it would be detrimental to the re-leasing of our buildings if we had to go through an SUP process. And that's primarily because the deal cycle in a second-generation building is so short. Most of the tenants that are in the marketplace, when they're looking at second-generation space, are looking with just a few months' notice, sometimes less. And so, to have to hit the pause button and say, "We've got to go through a city process" if we need to re-tenant in a different way, is just detrimental to the leasing. And we're happy to report our entire projects 100% leased and happy to be here in Lewisville. The staff has been great. And that goes from Richard and his team to inspections and fire and you name it. It's just been a great place to be and we have a great tenant roster and hope to be here in many, many years to come. So, we just, again, I'm opposed, but if, if you had to, the exemptions are absolutely critical for long-term operations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do ask some quick clarity from Richard. So, earlier we were talking about, does the, does the use follow the land or follow the tenant? And we're talking about somebody leasing to somebody else, would that require a special use permit?
If a site falls under one of the exemptions, then it would follow the land.
Okay. So if there's already, already an operation of a warehouse or manufacturing already?
That could continue on as they are today.
Wouldn't be affected? Okay. All right, thank you.
Hugh Bangarter?
Hugh Bangarter, 810 North Stemmons Freeway. I own a couple of automotive-oriented properties that fall into this category, and I got the lovely, lovely little postcards that scared me, caused a fair amount of concern. I came to the first meeting and there was a lot of anxiety there and a lot of upset. This letter, I think, has been explained to me, but it doesn't actually say that these are exceptions in the paperwork, just pointing that out. Another concern that I have, I'm assuming that my properties, because they're small and mom and pop type, are not going to be subject to this. But all I've heard mentioned is the 500-foot rule. There's a whole bunch of other stuff in here. And does all of that go along with the exemption? The 50 feet, all the trees, the berms, all that stuff?
Those, those are requirements if you fall under the new, in the new rules. So, Richard, you want to clarify that any better?
Yes, that, that comes into play if you're developing and, and doing a development that requires a new engineering site plan, then those requirements would kick in. For something that's existing and not changing, you can continue on as you are.
I'm going to mix it up here a little bit. The overlay district on I-35 impacts my buildings. I was not aware of that when that passed. I don't know how that slipped past me, but it did. And I was told that I had to do some additional things on my property, including removing parking places to put in trees. And I'll have precious few parking places as it is. I'll have four, and if I take out my handicap parking, then I'm going to have two spots left to park in. Anyway, my real question is, how does this play with the overlay? Does it impact it?
So, so the two are different, and, but since you are underneath both, you would have to conform to both. So one would be a conversation about the SUP process if you were, if you triggered that with a new engineering site plan. The other would be for conforming to the overlay district on I-35. And of course, that's a conversation, we, we, we talk to folks all the time about that. So there's a, a new standard, but we may find that if you have, if your parking is compromised by it, then maybe there's an opportunity to change and work with staff to, to mitigate that somewhat.
I would appreciate that very much, because when I was told that I had to eliminate most of my parking after the state's already taken the bulk of it, it just seemed like nonsense to me. And I wanted to make sure that these two ordinances were not interacting in a way that was going to make my buildings unusable.
And then that's, yeah, that would, that would definitely be a challenge, but they, they are, you would have to work through both of them in parallel. They shouldn't interact with each other. But the question really comes down to, when you're talking about the 35 overlay district, we, we speak to business owners on that all the time. So there, there are definitely places where we can, we work with you. I can't speak to your specific instance, but I guarantee if you're going to make a change, Richard and the team will talk with you about how to do it.
Yeah, we, we need to have an ongoing discussion about that, because that happened without my knowledge. In any case, moving on, I am in opposition to this. I think it is an overreach, but you've addressed my immediate concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Scott Ellerman with Constellation Real Estate Partners located at 2021 McKinney Avenue in Dallas, Texas. For quite some time, my company Constellation has had the pleasure of working on a project in Lewisville, which has gone very well so far. And the Lewis, the city of Lewisville has been extremely communicative, as well as available to answer any questions with regards to this proposed amendment. We actually have followed this amendment since its first draft sent out to public record in, in December, and then since then, it's been modified several times. And however, it still seems far from a finished product, as, as there still remains a lot of ambiguity in our interpretation of this amendment. This ambiguity in our minds could have drastic implications to the value of many industrial properties within the city of Lewisville. It could have severe implications on long-term vacancy rates within the city, job growth, and the presence of many significant corporate users that occupy all of these buildings. And, and these, these corporate users contribute significantly to the surrounding tax base, something that certainly needs to be taken into consideration. The primary concern with the ambiguity is, is with regards to re-tenanting. That's been brought up many times. As I think it was mentioned earlier, the, the three primary categories are warehouse distribution, light manufacturing, medium manufacturing, and heavy manufacturing. And there was brought up, and there's an example brought up earlier that certainly resonated with regards to a servicing company, you know, that, that would be storing and serving the city of Lewisville. And it just wasn't exactly clear where ultimately that would, that would fall with regards to the category. And I would say the demographic of tenants that, that occupy industrial space in Lewisville is, is probably an overwhelming amount of distribution and warehousing. And so there would obviously be an inclination to attract those types of users and avoid long-term specific use permit requirements if you were to ultimately switch to light manufacturing. So it could significantly impact the amount of light manufacturing, medium manufacturing users that ultimately occupy these buildings. And then one thing I, I wanted to note, after my colleague John Delvec was presenting, is that landlords actually are not issued the certificate of occupancies. It is the tenants that are issued these certificates of occupancies. And my question for the staff was, based off of the land, the tenants' design business, whether that be warehouse distribution, light manufacturing, is there going to be something added on these certificates of occupancies that include the landlord going forward? Because it's, it's just the tenant that is issued.
Richard. Yeah, typically the tenant is on the, the CO. But that's just one of multiple possible ways of gaining the exemption. The other one would be for the entire site, and that's through the engineering site plan.
Okay. And with the project that we're working on, it's our assumption currently that we do fall under this exemption. However, you know, it, it's, it's all subject to any change in use after the first tenant takes occupancy, correct? If we have a warehouse distribution user taking occupancy of the first building, and then they ultimately vacate the property and, and we're subject to the re-tenanting, is what has been mentioned before, would we need a special or specific use permit in the event that we lease someone with a similar operation?
The way the current, the current ordinances were written with the additional language, we have a snapshot taken on March 3rd. And if you have, meet one of those exemptions, then you're good to go from there on, will not have to abide by the 500-foot rule, which could potentially trigger an, an SUP.
Got it. And so the change in, and change in use doesn't have any impact to?
Correct.
Okay, understood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. I think, unless Dixon Ridge came back, I think we had him move into the comments. Sir, we, we've got plenty of cards. We'll get to you.
My name is Jeff Trailer. I live in Bartonville, but I've owned land in Lewisville for the past 25 years. I've been involved with the P&amp;Z meetings and have gone over with them. You've probably received a letter from me about the CO information. I'm not a REIT and I'm not a big landowner. I'm just a guy who owns some buildings in Lewisville. The challenge that I always face is, is that when the buildings are listed and their uses are laid out of what they can be, those uses, when they change, when you bring somebody else new in, it's normally not a huge challenge if you're trying to go from a manufacturing to a warehouse or warehouse and go back. It can get a little dicey and a little tricky, but normally it flows pretty well. The challenge that I had with this ordinance was, at first, it was gigantically overreaching. And P&amp;Z even saw it. They looked at it and went, "We really don't want to impact," because this whole process was brought forward because apparently you had cut complaints and you instructed P&amp;Z to do something and come up with this, to stop people from tearing down buildings, little retail shops or strip malls, and put in big box warehouses, you know, and stuff. And that was the justification that we were given as to why this process began. But in their, in their overreach, they, they scooped all of us up. Now, P&amp;Z pushed back and said, "Hey, we need some more pieces on it." And staff stepped up and made some changes to it. The one change that came up was the fact about the CO. March 5th or March 3rd, if you have a CO, and that CO states that you've got one of these uses, then you're good. And my complaint at that time was, "Well, wait a minute. My current COs that my tenants have, they don't say those words. They use some other words." And I'm like, "Why?" Staff was quick to respond and said, "Oh, those were," and I'm going to get it wrong, "industrial something, something that they used a year and a half ago and beyond that they had used." But everything new has these new words in it, manufacturing, warehouse, and everything that you have to comply. Then I wrote an email saying, "So what do I do if mine says factory instead of manufacturing?" And I'm told, "Well, it, it should be, we will review it and we will see that it matches up and you can go forward." And then my response was, "Wait, why don't you just add in those codes? The ones that you say that aren't my COs, which are? Put those into the ordinance, so that that way I am fine. I don't fall into that group of where I become reviewed. And when you become reviewed, you end up falling into this, that staff likes to refer to as the SUP, which is not a big deal. It is a big deal. Our tenants come to us and they're working on timeframes of weeks, not multiple months. And if we get tied up in the fact that they go, "Well, hang on a second. This word doesn't match this word, but you know, it's, and you're going to have to go and get this reviewed," we die on the vine. Now, I'm not a big REIT, like I said. I'm just a guy who owns some buildings. And so, all I was asking that they include were the codes that they used on the COs that have been issued for the past millennial that have, that are different than what they're saying. Just make it match. Include what he wants, the ones that are from here back a year and a half, but just add the others. So, that's where my concern falls. I'm not happy about it. I like some of the changes in the end, and the slides. Oop, I talked with my hands, let's be Italian. But, you know, we go with that. So let's consider the fact that we do change tenants, we do walk through them over time, they're not there forever, and they do come before this. And every time it happens, we all cringe because we're like, "Are they going to get it? Are they going to get, you know, booted into some category?" So, if you could, push back and say, "Hey, add the codes that you're referencing that are on most of the COs." And I do appreciate your time. Also, I do appreciate your service, because it's a thankless job. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Richard, I have a?
Go ahead, Brandon.
How large, how large is the property that you have? Well, how many square feet?
I'm sorry?
How many square feet are your, are the properties that you're talking about?
They're in the, they go from 6,000 all the way up to, I think, almost 25,000.
Okay, so I think, I think you're exempt from that. If I'm, I want to make sure that I'm right with Richard.
Yes, but I'm, when I saw the exemption for 25,000, I was like, it whacked quite a bit of mine off the table. But I, I don't look at it just for me. And I appreciate the concern, but I, I look at it for people who are not here and people who are here that look at it and go, "We don't want to fall into it."
And what, what I want to explain to you is like, what I'm, what I'm trying to grasp is like, everyone who's talked so far, that's given us square foot, we've seen that, that they, that they have exemptions out of there. So I want to make sure that you're covered with that at least. And also, with any ordinance, it also could be improved and improved on. So we're not trying to infract, infract on anybody's business. So I just wanted to make sure that you're okay. And if, as things come forward, we do invite you, and our staff, as everyone has said, is very good at listening and working with folks for anything that may come up in the future. But we do have a very specific reason why we're doing this, and it's not to impact the businesses that we're, that we're working with. So I just want to make sure that's understood. And that's off my hands too, so I just hit the mic.
I would, I'd also like to say and reiterate the fact that it follows the land, not the tenant. It follows the land, not the tenant. So if you're exempt, and you have a tenant, and then you lose that tenant, and you get a new tenant, it follows the land, not the tenant.
Fully aware of that.
Okay.
And, but the question that comes down to is, if it doesn't match the land that's following the tenant, you know, if it, the land, it's following the land, not the tenant, if that code is not what they have on file at that moment and you come forward, that's going to go in perpetuity until you change it again. So that language, those identifiers, warehouse, manufacturing, or factory and storage, they're both out there right now, but we're only addressing one set.
Richard, would you address that real quick?
Yes, if you have an exemption on March 3rd, and we've got several different categories there, then that is permanent in, for that property in the current state that it's in. Now, if you propose changes, that triggers an engineering site plan, then you would be subject to the 500-foot rule. But if you fall in an exemption, and if, if, like I said earlier, the majority of buildings built since the 19, or late 1980s have engineering site plans on file here at the city that designate the zoning use. So it's very easy to make that determination.
But the codes are different to the specific language references. If your CEO has these codes on it, these words, old COs do not have those words. And that's only a year and a half ago it changed. So, so I'm saying, if someone has to go, "Well, we agree that these old codes match the new ones." That's, that's something that they, it's, it's words.
And I do understand what you're saying, but your exemption is not necessarily fallen under that CO. Look at the size of your buildings.
Wait, wait, but you, you, you can't argue just for me.
No.
And I mean, I, I'm- And I mean, it's sad that I'm passionate to you about this when I know that it's not going to hit me. So what I'm saying is, it's not a large item to add those codes that match.
Gotcha.
Staff agrees that the majority of the exemptions will cover probably 99.9% of the situations in the city that's currently on the ground.
So I do have a quick follow-up question. That's actually, that's an interesting thought. I'm also skeptical, I just want to have a skeptical about the 25,000-foot, the square-foot rules because I think about how can this be abused? So we think actually very similarly to this. So my question is, I think there's a misunderstanding that if your CO or your site plan doesn't say one of a couple of words on there, then it triggers an S U P. My understanding is that you just got to go to you or somebody on staff and go, "I think these are the equivalent." And if you say it is, then they're good. There's no S U P required on that. Is that accurate?
That is correct. As long as there's the exemption in place, then they're not subject to the 500-foot rule or possible S U P.
Richard, would it be a fair assumption to say, because I hear what you're saying about the CO, would it be a fair assumption to say that we've, the exemption that's being proposed that reverts to the engineering site plan was kind of an intention of catching all of that?
Yes, if something's not clear on the CO, you could always default to the engineering site plan, which is very concrete in its terminology.
Okay.
Angela Hunt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Angela Hunt. I'm with the Law Firm of Monchar, 500 North Ackert Street in Dallas. I'm here tonight representing a number of industrial property owners, including Nuveen, which is the teachers' annuity real estate, First Industrial, Stonemont, Majestic Realty, T L F Logistics, and others. This represents hundreds of millions of dollars in investment in the city and hundreds of jobs. The proposal before you tonight threatens that investment. The practical effect of this, whereas currently a specific use permit is not required for either a warehouse use or a light manufacturing use, the practical effect is that warehouse uses and light manufacturing uses in the city will require S U Ps in a number of circumstances. As a result, this makes Lewisville less attractive to industrial tenants. It also makes it less likely that owners of industrial sites will reinvest in the property to make improvements to the property. Anything that's going to trigger an engineering site plan is going to require an S U P. It's going to trigger it. So from an ownership standpoint, the owners will be less likely to make significant improvements into the property, to reconstruct old buildings. You're not going to be seeing that. And tenants will be less likely to look at Lewisville because if they have a choice between looking at cities that require an S U P versus cities that, as Lewisville has been, allowing these uses by right, they're going to go to those cities that will not require an S U P and a several months-long process. If the council does move forward in approving this tonight, we agree with other speakers. Staff has done a good job of making improvements to this with the additional exceptions. We would ask that you add those tonight if you do vote affirmatively for this. Thank you.
I actually have a clarifying question, Ms. Hunt. I'm sorry. So at the beginning, you'd mentioned that there was some investments that were... Can you go over that again? You said there's, I guess, some investment vehicles that schoolteachers and people would be affected by this. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Certainly. One of the ownership interests I represent is Nuveen. It's the Teachers' Annuity Fund.
Right.
And so their investments make an enormous difference to what their retirement is, what they can expect, and it does impact teachers.
So that's why I'm a little confused, because this is where things go forward. So that fund that they're talking about, that's already built, and that's already invested. So I don't understand how this would affect our social schoolteachers.
Great, great question, Mayor Protim. So if we look at what is allowed currently, we're allowed to move forward by right on making investments in a warehouse or a light industrial use. What does that mean? Well, that means that if we have a million-square-foot, a half-million-square-foot building, and it is old, it's dilapidated, we need to build a new, take it down. If we want to build that under the current proposal, we would need to get an S U P. We would not have those uses by right because we're going to be coming back with a new engineering site plan. And so that's going to trigger the new requirements. At least, that's my understanding, and of course, I defer to your staff on this. But my understanding is, if we're coming back with major improvements to a site, either tearing down a building or building a new building on the site, we're going to be submitting a new engineering site plan, and that would trigger the S U P process.
So I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. So my understanding is that it follows the land. Now, if you wanted to expand a warehouse, I think you're right. If you want to go through and expand a warehouse, and you've got perhaps an issue for S U P. But Richard, could you apply on that, please?
Yes. Improvements on a site like a renovation only requires a permit. There's only certain things that trigger an engineering site plan. That's usually a major expansion. U D C does allow a small, modest expansion to an existing warehouse or manufacturing, up to 10% of the existing building or 5,000 square feet, whichever is less. We even allow some modest additions of parking, I think up to about 10 or 11 spaces. We also have provisions to allow, you know, we're working on landscaping and so forth. A lot of that can be done without the engineering site plan. But if a building is dilapidated and completely removed, then it would trigger the, if it's in within 500 feet of one of the lesser... So there's a lot of ifs. It's very site-specific. It just depends on the environment around the site. And if it does trigger an S U P, that can be, as I said earlier, go concurrently with the engineering site plan. If it's well-sited and very little impact on lesser intense uses, you know, typically would receive a recommendation from approval from staff. Once the S U P is granted, then the site is good. So there's not really going to be an impact on tenant issues moving in and out after the site is constructed. It'd be legally conforming with no problems.
Thank you for the questions, and thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Lauren Billings.
Hi again. My name is Lauren Billings. I live at 1008 Vancouver Drive, and my child and I have something to say to you. So out of all the people that we've heard to speak tonight, I am a warehouse owner in Allen, but I live in Lewisville, and I am currently selling my warehouse that I built. I am the landowner, and I am looking for a place to rent. As a business owner, I think your S U P is not firm enough. I think this will probably be a shock to a lot of people in the room, but I'm going to tell you a story. So you'll notice I have my baby dinosaur in my hand. I know everybody wants to see. This is my baby. Can you see the resemblance? Very beautiful, yes? I build these things. This is my family business. I straight-up build dinosaurs. It's the coolest job. I do this in Allen. We've been doing this for 21 years, and this is literally a mom-and-pop shop. I still work with my mom. We got out of the rental game, but I'm going to tell you a story. I can't tell you who the property owner is because you've already said their name, and they've already presented in this room, so I'm not going to embarrass them. But I support SUP. I'm just going to lovingly call it that because this is what happens when property owners don't take accountability. I rented a 50,000-square-foot warehouse space that was attached to another warehouse space. My side, I built animatronic dinosaurs and pieces like this that I bring around globally to inspire education and inspiring people to get into electronics and engineering and studying the prehistoric past. My neighbor builds nutritional supplements that people ingest. Really fun. I don't know what goes into those things, but I know people eat them. We shared a wall and an AC unit, and every now and then, my room, which was closest to my neighbor, it would make my room smell like Flintstone vitamins, not to go on dinosaur theme. And one day, the fire department had to come in, and they put this little device in the air to measure the molecules in my air. And I asked them, as a joke, "Am I going to die?" And they didn't answer because they were literally checking if I was going to die. What had happened is the company next to me had dropped some chemicals, and whatever combination of chemicals they had dropped, it had caused a train reaction. And if you were standing over it, within seconds, you would be dead. Because we were sharing a filtration unit, the air had gone over to our side, and we were in danger as well. We hated the vitamin smell. We had told the property manager several times, "Hey, it smells like fruity vitamins, and it's giving us headaches. Can you please stop it?" But we were told, "We don't have time to chase smells." And the hazmat team from Frisco had to come out because Allen doesn't have a hazmat team. And they closed down our building for a day. And the first thing my employees asked were, "Are we getting paid today?" Not if they're going to live or die, just are we getting paid? I tried to go through my insurance and ask them, "Does this count as a natural disaster? Because clearly, this is not my fault. Why am I responsible for making sure that my employees have enough money because somebody else caused this problem, because somebody didn't have enough checks, because my landlord didn't make sure that we're okay?" No, it's all on you guys to figure out what to do. Of course, I have this welder I love, but he always wants his pay, and he's got to drive all the way back home. So I said, "Screw it. It's just going to come out of our paycheck, out of my money, to make sure everybody has pay, even though this was somebody else's problem that could have easily been avoided." So I ask you, or I tell you, "Thank you for putting SUP in because that's what's up, taking care of our community and our people." And I know these guys over here in the suits, they're like, "Hey, you're holding us down." But I've built a building, and I know anyone, the fire marshal, the city, whatever engineers can come in and say, "You know what? You need a few more vents on this side of the building." And they can hold it up for whatever reason. They can figure it out. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate it for making Lewisville a safe and inhabitable place for all of us and baby Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Lance Van Zant.
Hi, Lance Van Zant, 512 West Hickory. I represent the Leatherwood Plastics, Inc., here in Lewisville, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity. We've pretty consistently, from the beginning, spoken and written in opposition to the changes. Of course, over the last few weeks, we've seen the staff work on some of the concerns and bring about some exemptions. And I think we're, you know, I think our existing business falls under maybe a couple of the exemptions. So I'm not so concerned about, you know, today or tomorrow. But, you know, we are somewhat unique from the other folks that have spoken. Mr. Leatherwood has an owner-occupied, small manufacturing-type business that he started in Lewisville over 30 years ago, came from Flower Moon about 30 years ago, built his business here in Lewisville, and that's essentially the family retirement. That's the family asset. So not so much concerned about the operation. I think staff's been very responsive and helpful in working through some of those issues. But in my mind, it still creates, you know, uncertainty as to the future. A potential buyer, a banker for a potential investor, you know, an investor that wants to come in and buy the business and expand it. I'm just not sure that, how that's protected by what I'm now hearing is a legal, non-conforming use. This is actually the first time that I've heard that in a meeting where this has been referred to as a legal, as a legal conforming use. That's great, and I'm happy to hear that. I just, I can't say with absolute certainty, tell my client that, you know, you've got nothing to worry about in the future. And that's what concerns us, and especially folks who, like Mr. Leatherwood, you know, going back and looking at some of the issues that have been created by the cumulative zoning district. I mean, those are, you know, in fairness, those are developers, home builders, home buyers who constructed their homes in a, what they knew was a, next to a light industrial district. So I know that's not, I know you don't want to see that built next to you, but it's, you know, it shouldn't be a surprise that that, at least, could happen. You know, Mr. Leatherwood, you know, none of these problems were created by Mr. Leatherwood or for folks who have been here operating for 30 years. But it seems like he's paying some of those costs that were created by others. So that's our, you know, that's our complaint and our concern. And at the same time, we're, you know, for the record, we're going to, you know, maintain our opposition. But if it is passed, we certainly hope that you do it with all these exemptions that have been carved out for existing owners. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. James Bullington.
I'm James Bullington. I'm a real estate broker and an industrial developer. The biggest problem that I see with this whole thing tonight is you guys have put together a half-baked idea, and you're trying to shove it down our throats. There's a lot of ambiguity, like several people have mentioned. You're in jeopardy of harming other people's futures that have purchased land in Lewisville that either are planning to build or have already built. And this gentleman over here, Richard, he spent 30 minutes blowing a bunch of hot air out here to us and not giving us any specifics. Like he mentioned, "Well, the people weren't getting along with Mary Kay." He didn't say why. He hasn't said, he hasn't given one example of why there's a problem with current zoning meeting up to residential, not one. And he spent 30 minutes talking to us, blowing smoke up our butts, up your butts. You know? I understand you guys are falling for all this. None of you guys, based on your bios, have any business experience whatsoever. You haven't created any jobs ever. You don't create any jobs now. So I can understand the confusion that you guys... And by the way, people, next time you vote for council members, make darn sure that they're not liberal, and also make sure that they have some business experience. Because when you don't get people with business experience, this is what you get right here. This is a sham. You guys are not competent enough to make decisions like this because you don't know anything. You don't understand business. You're never going to understand business. And it's based on what we've seen for the last month and a half. You just don't get it. You're never going to get it. The only way you're going to get it is when you guys go ahead and pass this thing through, and then some of us that have guts enough to stand up to you are going to sue you. And by the way, Texas law changed. You can be sued individually, not just as a group, not just as a city. And by God, there's enough people over here that you're going to piss off. That's exactly what's going to happen to you. You're going to get sued. And this wonderful planning department that you have over here, we're going to make sure that the next council that comes in here is going to remove them and bring some new people in here that actually have some intelligence. And this guy right here, biggest, look, I'm 67 years old. I've never seen anybody in my life blow as much hot air as Richard and not say anything, except for maybe some of the Democratic congressmen in the White House. But it's a joke. When you come up here, and if he would have given us some facts about why this is needed, you would have got some support. But he didn't. He never has. This has been into a month and a half or longer. You guys don't even have, you don't even have a city attorney over here, do you? No, that, yeah, I guess you are. Okay. So I would give some advice from her to see if you don't, to make sure that you're not putting yourself in jeopardy. And I'll tell you something else, too. We're running out of time here. This, this is a joke. You would have had a lot more input if you'd have put this in a Lewisville envelope. You would've had a lot more input if you'd have put this in, in a Lewisville envelope, okay, with the pieces stationary in there, like we get if our grass is too tall or anything else. But this, this looks like spam. Do you guys have any real, do you have any realized, do you realize how much spam we get in a day? It's ridiculous. And then you go in and add to that. We're not gonna tolerate any change to the setback rule. If you go in and adopt 50-foot setback, I have some land to develop, I'm gonna sue you for that 20 feet. Because right now, it's 30-foot setback. I'm gonna sue you for eminent domain on that 20-foot that you're taking without just cause and without payment. And I'm 100% against the zoning. Your landscape, your landscape stuff that you guys have out there is completely ridiculous. If you had anybody with any common sense that worked in the city that knew, you don't put a bunch of canopy trees 30 feet apart, they're gonna touch limbs and block out all the plants and all the grass underneath it. And you wanna do a five-foot-high berm so that all that, when all the grass dies from the trees, it sheds all the dirt into the streets? Yeah, that's a good way to impress the environmental agency in Texas. So now what's gonna happen if a building is destroyed by fire or tornado? Huh? You're gonna have to do a new site plan. What if they decide instead of 150,000-square-foot building, they find it's more economical to build three or four smaller buildings? So now, all of a sudden, or two 25,000-square-foot buildings? So now they gotta go through a SUP process? And who's gonna run the SUP process? Have y'all ever witnessed how the SUP process works in the city of Lewisville? It's 90 days or better. Who's gonna manage that? And who gets to decide who's gonna be the one that says whether something is light industrial or light intensity or heavy intensity? It's not, it's not in here. There's no clarification on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kevin Vesey, go on once. Chris Scarborough.
Chris Scarborough. 13894 Stikes, Texas.
Thank you.
I kinda agree with the guy a little bit. He's a little hyper. I'll agree with him just a little bit on some things. Like, you know, tornado hits that building, what are your plans for that? You know, what if the guy has absolutely no way to stop what happens to his building? And he's gonna rebuild. Is he gonna follow under, is he gonna follow under some sort of guidelines that he's able to rebuild his building and that? I mean, it doesn't affect me. My building's under 5,000 square feet. I'm doing pretty good here, so. But this is about everybody else as well. And I see some future developments here. So, I mean, they're gonna ask you the same thing. So what is, what's gonna happen there? I mean, that's the question. It's a real question. Is that guy gonna be following under this? Does anybody know? I don't. From what I understand it, if the guy, if Ms. Hunt wants to put more than 5,000 square foot to her existing building, now she's gonna have to refile. She might have enough land, might have space to put the spot, but now she's gonna be bound to this new rule, which is gonna drive up the cost of construction. I own a construction company. And I build restaurants, movie theater, and churches across the state of Texas, across the United States. I'm currently in Atlanta, Georgia, fixing him to Florida. I build in California. I build in Maine. I build all over. My business is right here. I do that with 20 people. We average about $20 million a year. Thank you, Jesus, for that. Not last year. It's the worst year of my life. Cost me $2 million to keep my doors open here in Lewisville. But again, this doesn't affect me as much as it affects everybody else. What are we gonna do for some of the simplest things that need to happen? Ms. Hunt made a valid point. She needs to upgrade. That requires a new site plan. I go through site plan, building apartments all the time. We so much as fart during construction, I hate to say it that way, but we do. And all of a sudden, requires a new site plan during construction. What's gonna happen then? It doesn't change. These people need, if they have an existing building that needs to follow the land, and if you're gonna allow new homeowners or new subdivisions to come in, maybe they should be held to that 500-foot rule. So that they don't go onto that existing property he spoke of in the very beginning in the 30 minutes where he said that that building was put there in the 1980s. And they got trucks coming around. Planning could've happened way before then, to where it wouldn't allowed the impact of the citizens to be greatly affected by that trucking. So the city allowed it. I get it. We gotta make money. We gotta allow growth and new potentials. And some of these people, when they buy a big, nice fancy house and right behind them is, I don't know, the makeup company? Well, if they didn't look behind their house to see there was a makeup building back there, I'm sorry. That's just a problem. You gotta deal with that. But they should see it. I mean, it's not like Mary Kay's tiny. Takes up half the mat. It's almost bigger than the mall we got. So that's all I got. Most of the questions I had are answered.
Thank you, sir. Will Narduzzi, my apologies on the last name.
Good evening. I'm a little bit of a tweener because I run a real estate company called Manner Door Realty Investments. We're locally owned in Plano, Texas. We bought our building at 699 State Highway 121 and Railroad. We closed 12/28/24. So all the notices were going to the seller. And we're just getting these now. So a little bit of a surprise. Our business, unlike a lot of the institutionally-owned people here in the room, supports eight employees and roughly 25 children. Every deal we make goes directly to us. All of our money is coming from local here in DFW. So there's pension funds, all that stuff, but I'm a decision-maker. So when things like this occur, it greatly affects our business. So I also wanted to take the last couple of people here who talked about properties that were smaller than the 25,000-square-foot requirement. I'm an oddball. My property is not a second-gen space. It might not even be a third-gen space. It's probably a fourth-gen space. It's roughly 43,000 feet, built in 1970. It looks like a pile of garbage. But we bought it because we wanted to enhance it. It's metal. It's got some rust on it. Doesn't look good. Probably, I don't know, 10,000 to 30,000 people drive by it every month or every day. I don't really know what the, what the, what the volume is. But we bought it with a mission to kinda enhance it, repaint it. I've already got a quote to go do that. But our tenants are a pain in the butt. They don't respond to our emails. They don't respond to our phone calls. It's almost impossible to collect rent. Their property has no COs. Period. End of story. This is an issue for us because I don't know who's coming in next. I can kick all the tenants out, upgrade it. You guys are happy. I put in some trees. It looks great. But I don't know who's coming next. Could be a warehouse or a distribution guy. It could be an auto guy. It could be Penske. It could really be anybody. I don't know. But if I'm gonna spend 20, 30,000 bucks in landscaping and all these enhancements, and I gotta go through an SUP, similar to what other people said, it takes a while to get one. I'm okay with it. It is what it is. You guys have to do quality control. But in the space I play in, I've got 43,000 feet. I could demise the property in four different quadrants. Right now, it's demised into six. It's not functional. It doesn't work. It looks really bad. But if I demise into two, into 222s, more or less, right? Those tenants come and go quick. If they can't come and sign a lease and get in the space within 30 to 60 days, they're gonna go on to the next guy. So you're putting our property at risk. You're putting me at risk. You're putting me at risk for not being able to hold a DSAR, Death Service Coverage Ratio with my lender. So it just, it adds complication. Warehouses are simple. They're four walls and a roof generally. That's, office buildings are hard. I don't understand them. I don't want to ever understand them. But what we do is simple. We try to keep it simple. This makes it more complicated because it's unknown. So I bought a property with the goal to enhance it, and this is causing unknown issues. I don't really know what's coming next. So can't really project. It's not really healthy, but that's where me and my partners are at. So just voicing concerns, because I'm the tweener. I'm the guy who's not, it's sub 25,000 feet. I'm not him. And I'm not the big guy out of New York. I'm right in between. So that's all I really got to say. I don't know if anybody's got any questions or any comments, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. That's all I have for public comment at this time. Any questions for any speakers? Any questions for staff?
I just have a couple of comments, Mayor. So first off, Richard, thank you so much for your team's hard work in this. We could've made it very simple and gone with the first iteration that we had. Blunt force, been done, no ambiguity. But I think trying to go through and clarify and listen and pay attention to the carve-outs that made a lot of sense. There's some people here who just, maybe not here anymore, just got confused for some reason. But that was, that was an attempt to try to make things better. So I appreciate you leaning in for that. And real quick, you know, you had a great, a great slide up there that showed how all the flexibility in light intensity, light industrial, I'm sorry. So just, just real quick, accessory building, accessory structure, accessory use, cemetery, outside stores, solar energy, wind energy, animal care, veterinary, community centers, parks, schools, breweries. There's a lot you can do with light, with light industrial, a whole bunch. This is one use of that. And then, you know, there's probably another 30 on here. And then if I go in and look, the concept of needing SUP for light industrial is not new. If you look at, if you look at the code, you need, you need SUPs for accessory dwelling units for commercial, for, for manufacturing, medium intensity, dwelling unit bar, food truck parts, kiosks. It goes on and on and on. So the concept of an SUP is not a new concept for light industrial. So I think this makes a lot of sense. I think it would be unreasonable to ask this council what, what we could expect in 50 years and try to set guidance for the 2075 council, just like it was unreasonable to expect that the 1975 council would have any idea that we'd have internet, that we'd have a growth, we'd have COVID come, bump up the, the demand for warehouses. They had no way of seeing that coming. So that does all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments? Richard, I did have one. One of our speakers mentioned that it needed to reference a table, that the ordinance needed to reference a table or should. Did you catch that?
I believe that, there has been several stakeholders that we spoke with. As far as the actual Section 24 that is being recommended for amendments, this is one of 24 supplemental standards. So Chapter 3 addresses supplemental standards for all 24 categories. This is just one category of those 24. And it states very clearly that part of the, of the code, that if you cannot meet all of the supplemental standards, then you can, you can request an SUP for an alternative.
Counsel, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Counsel voted unanimously, close the public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance set forth in the caption with the addition of the subsections as presented in the administrative comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Article 7, uses parking requirements, supplemental use regulations, and certain distance requirements of Volume 2 of the Lewisville City Code, known as Unified Development Code, by amending Chapter 7.3, Supplemental Use Regulations, Section 7.3.24, manufacturing light intensity, manufacturing medium intensity, manufacturing heavy intensity, and warehouse distribution facility, to prohibit such uses from locating on a property within 500 feet of properties containing certain other uses without a special use permit, subject to certain exceptions, and amending Exhibit 7.2.3-4, non-residential zoning districts, to clarify applicability of special use permit requirements for such uses in certain zoning districts, providing for a savings clause, a repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. I want to, I want to thank everybody for taking the time and being here and your comments. If you have further comments or questions, please reach out to city staff or to city council, and we'd be more than happy to take those under advisement. Public hearing number two. Consideration on ordinance granting a special use permit for licensed massage therapy on a portion of a 1.1601 acre tract legally described as Lot 2, Block A, Lewisville Plaza Phase 2, located at 1010 Edmonds Lane, Suite 107, in Zone Local Commercial District. As requested by Yanghuan Zhao, top massage on behalf of Jay Maharaj LLC, the property owner, case number 24-12-21-SUP. The applicant is requesting to operate a licensed massage therapy business in a space where the previous business owner and another person was arrested with four combined charges related to prostitution. Per Section 7.2.23 of the Unified Development Code, a special use permit is required in this circumstance. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial 7 to 0 on January 21, 2025. Due to the recommendations for denial, an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the city council is required to approve the SUP. It's recommended that the city council deny the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludeke, our planning director, is available for questions. And the public hearing on this is now open.
Mayor, I did want to add something to the record before we got started. I know there was references, reference to a request for information from the Flower Mound Police Department. We did not, I think they've submitted that to the Attorney General's Office for review of that open record request. Staff has found another review. It's through AMPreviews.net. And I cannot confirm whether or not this is accurate, but it does look like there are individuals from the public that are writing reviews of the applicant's spa that's currently located in Flower Mound that is identifying that there are sexual activities happening
Is there not a speaker for this item?
I do have a speaker. We have Yanghuan Zhao and Rusty Chu. And my apologies, that's, that's not my first language, so if I've gotten your names, I apologize. They have, from Cross Timbers in Corinth Lane in Flower Mound in Frisco, they're here
704 Cross Timbers, suit number 126, Flower Mound, Texas. But also, I have a name called Coco. So you can find my name on Google, on reviews, Jaga Spa in Flower Mound. Thank you.
And my name is Rusty Chu. Address is 9915 Corinth Lane in Frisco, Texas. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, this evening. We attended the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on the 21st of January. After we went through a few rounds of question and answer of compliance request, and we agreed to meet all the, all the requests. And also, we added a few more, even though they were not requested. For example, during operation, all doors of the massage rooms will be open, just as they are being opened in the current establishment in Flower Mound. So I would like to, before proceeding, I would like to comment on that, on that review. Ms. Zhao's establishment in Flower Mound, she operates the establishment with all the doors open. And I would, I'd like to ask the council members to disregard the, the reviews because after all, this is a free world. Everybody can say whatever. I can go, go to the platform and say, "The President of the United States came to visit too." So it doesn't make any difference. But anyway, even though, even though the compliance requests are met... the compliance requests are met, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, decided to vote a denial. Our opinion is that, um, the, the denial is, um, groundless, unsubstantiated and biased because it's all based on assumptions. And we come to you today to give you facts and not assumptions. And I already distributed, uh, the three licenses for, um, for Ms. Zhao. Uh, she got licensed, a personal massage license in January 2024, and another establishment license for her current establishment in October 24. And, uh, she also obtained a establishment license in January 25 for the, uh, intended venue, uh, 1010 South Admins. Having said that, I want to, uh, let you know that every license approval has to go through rigorous background check by the state. And these are facts. These are not assumptions. Um, I would also like to tell you that, uh, the reason that Ms. Zhao wants to obtain this establishment at 1010 South Admins is because of cost only, not because of the clientele. Right now, she is paying over $4,000 of rent for less than a thousand square feet at her Flower Mound shop. And she, her intention is to get this establishment in Louisville and immediately sell her shop because it's very difficult to afford. And, uh, on another note, that is personal, but, um, I, I got her, uh, consent. She's divorced and she doesn't have custody of her two underage children. And she operates, she knows, she understands very well, uh, this business can be shady. And she works very carefully. That's why she makes sure that there's no foul play. Because any foul play, she will lose visitation to her kids. So, um, am I out of time?
You are, but you both filled out cards, so I'll, I'll-
I'm sorry.
You are out of time, but you both filled out cards, so if you're speaking on her behalf, I understand.
Okay. And, uh, the city allows her to, um, to open an SUP application and pay close to $800,000 fee without knowing that there is a predetermination that it's not going to be approved. The last, in the last Planning and Zoning Commission, that lady, we did get the name, she said, uh, it's not really you, it's the, it's the place. So meaning that the place is gonna be denied. So why, uh, accept a SUP application and take $800 of fees? And then go through all these things, back and forth questions, and you know, you're gonna deny anyway without consideration. So I think a denial is gonna hurt the landlord also. It's gonna hurt a good business person with integrity, a law-abiding business person. And, um, I would like to urge Mayor and council members to consider and grant approval for her SUP application.
Thank you for your time. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I, I have some questions, actually. Um, so I was reading through your, your letter here to P&amp;Z, and you, I'm curious how you came across this business opportunity, because it says you have no knowledge and never met Ms. Zhao before, the current owner of the Top Massage. So how did you come across this opportunity?
Um, the current, well, the seller advertised on some social media.
That she was selling the business? Okay. So you'd mentioned before that you, you've got, um, you know, anything, anybody can say anything, right? You said, now's your opportunity. We asked for a, uh, we asked for a, we filed a, a Freedom of Information request to get the arrest, um, documents from Gia Gia. Now's your chance. Tell us what happened.
Uh, I'm not sure if I understand you.
So my understanding is that there was a arrest, there was a, a police report made out, maybe it was an arrest, there's a police report made out at Gia Gia, correct?
Can, can I clarify?
Yes, please.
I believe there was a complaint made.
A complaint?
Yes.
Okay. But we couldn't, we couldn't get any of that documentation. Can you explain to us what happened, what that complaint was about?
She, she doesn't, and then she has no knowledge of, uh, what the report was about. Because she was, she was never approached, not even a phone call from the police department. I mean, last, after, after the last, um, hearing, sh, when we were standing outside, she was actually very mad because she said, if a, a, a allegation, a crime like that is very serious, why didn't the police even call, visit, or, or, uh, ask her to, to go to the police station and, and, and answer? No, there's no, no police.
So the report was so sensitive that we can't get a Freedom of Information Act fulfilled?
Oh, we would like you to get the report.
But you have no knowledge of this?
We, we, no.
Have you gone to the police and asked them about it?
Uh, she did. She did, um- Yeah. Um, because since you weren't able to get it, uh, she went, actually went to Flower Mound to try to get what that was.
And they wouldn't give it to her either?
I think she, um, gave, um, Michelle a copy by email.
Do we have a copy of that, of that report?
And I kind of read it and it's not, it's not, uh, it didn't say anything.
Well, it was so sensitive, they wouldn't give it to us. So does somebody on staff have a copy of this report that we don't know of?
And Berry, man. Okay. Um, Michelle Berry has a copy, but, but we just sent it to her before the, the public hearing started.
So let me ask you this question. The, um, why this location? You said it was for cost reasons, but it's a known, it, you're gonna have a certain kind of clientele because this is known. You can, you can say that the, the things that you see on the reviews out there are false, but you got a certain kind of clientele that's gonna come there anyway. If I'm a business owner and I'm gonna go somewhere and there's been three robberies there, I'm probably not gonna open up a shop where there's been three robberies. So why, why this shop? Why this location?
Uh, strictly cost. Uh, the place has been closed for, I don't know, for how long already, and she doesn't know, we don't know how much longer we'll have to wait before it can be reopened if approved. So I think, um, these clients, whoever, whoever went there, I don't know how many, would probably go somewhere else.
So there are four, four arrests, I believe, right? Four arrests?
I believe that's what it said on the, three, three arrests.
Do we know the timeframe for that? I'm trying to extrapolate out how many clients we might be talking about.
Three, that included the owner.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. And then I, one final question. I'll turn it over to anybody else who has questions here. The, the hours of operation that you're proposing is to close at, what, eight? I think, eight-thirty, something like that? So currently in your Flower Mound Gia Gia location, you're open much later than that. Why are you open to 10:00 PM on Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
That's because it's a food store. Usually, we say it's 10:00 PM, but usually we close at 9:00 PM. That, that because the Flower Mound, like, uh, some, like, uh, some places, the, the people come late. But in Flower Mound, you know, actually, actually, uh, liver by the stores usually close very early, and the people is very high-quality people that goes to the bed very early. Actually, we, nine o'clock until, like, this weekend, it's Monday this weekend, we, um, stayed until 10:00 PM because we have, still have clients call our appointments. But usually, if we don't have appointments call, normally, like right now, it's already closed. 9:00 PM, we're closed.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have some questions. Well, go ahead.
Well, I was, I, I did want to reiterate that, you know, I, I actually, um, I, I'm not opposed to approving an SUP for a legitimate massage business.
Thank you.
So I just wanna, I just wanna let you know that. I will say one thing that concerns me in this open records request, the response that we got from the city's attorney, was that it says, "The town believes the responsive information is highly intimate or embarrassing, such that the release would be highly objectionable to a person of ordinary sensibilities and of no legitimate public interest." That concerns me. Um, and I understand that some, that allegations may have been made that are not true. If that, if you were able to get that report and you were able to give it to staff, I want to see it. Michelle, I saw Michelle walk in the room.
Yes, they, they received a similar response, um, stated that we did when they asked for the open records request. They received a similar letter with response.
Okay, so the town of Flower Mound will not release the report to her either.
Yes, the email that I received had the, the attachment that was that same style letter that just said they're not releasing the report.
We also would like the, the report to be disclosed too, because we want, we, we also want to know what's going on.
I, I mean, I, I think for me personally, without seeing that report, it's, it's almost, I, I mean, if there's a report that could be received that would exonerate, you know, the, the allegations completely, I mean, I feel like that's pretty important information to have. I don't feel, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving an SUP without seeing that because what I'm seeing from the attorney and especially considering that Flower Mound will not release the report to you either, even though you are the business owner, that's a little more concerning as well, um, about what, what actually happened. What, what, and that is more than just a review online, because I realize review online, you have to take that for what it's worth. Anybody can go say anything if they're unhappy about something that happened. Um, but when the police department's involved, that concerns me more, so, um, I'd, I'd really like to see that report.
Mayor, um, a review online such as Yelp or Yahoo Review, because someone's unhappy with you, is completely different than the reviews that I found with your existing establishment listed. They, they don't, there, it's night and day. They rate the girls, they talk about happy endings, they go all out discussing this. I stopped at six, at six sites. The letter that you have talks about taking over the location. It doesn't talk about moving your business. It talks about taking over that location. I can only assume that there may be existing clientels because I went and matched up some names and they cross. So you're right, anybody can say anything, especially when they want something.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not buying it. If you want to open a legit massage foot spa or whatever, buy her out and open it in another location that you don't need an SUP in. But there is no way I would ever vote for an SUP right now.
Well, we kind of expected that because, because, uh, it's a predetermination.
No, it's not a predetermination.
It is, it is.
No, it's not, sir. There's a lot of research.
It is, it is. We are prepared. We are prepared, but I think it's absurd that she will, she goes somewhere and it's the same old her and it will be approved. But over there, it's not approved. I already said it's because of cost. Going somewhere, remodel the, a, a brand-new place, it would take 60, 70,000 dollars minimum. But going in here is $10,000. That's the only reason.
Thank you, sir.
And the rent is only 1,500 dollars. But, but your predetermination, I understand.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I do have one more question, Mayor, I'm sorry. So, and this is, and, so I went out to the Secretary of State site for, for Texas here, and I was looking to try to find who owns what. And it looks like, and again, Gia Gia, I realize that's fairly common, uh, for a name, but I see a Gia Gia Foot Massage LLC that the registered agent was Zhong's Accounting and Tax Services. Do you know who that is?
I think, uh, I recognize this accounting firm. Uh, they, they, um, open LLCs for, and, and companies for businesses.
So was this this Gia Gia that I saw on, on the Secretary of State's site? It was shut down in 2002?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it looks like it was reopened again in, right after that, uh, with a group called Enhanced Health LLC. Do you know who that is?
Enhanced Health LLC.
This is what's confusing to me, because the, the Yang Zhong Zhao, it shows as a manager, but it shows that the, the governing body is Enhanced Health LLC out of Florida. I'm just wondering who that is.
She, um, she, she just said, I'm translating.
Okay.
Because I didn't know. Uh, she bought the business. So it was, it was previously, uh, a massage establishment, and she bought it from someone, and she, uh, engaged Zhong's accounting firm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passes 6 to nothing, close the public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to deny or approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Mayor, I move to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney? That's only if ordinance is approved. It would help if I read the parenthetical. Um, I have a motion and a second to deny. Uh, with that being the case, please vote, Counsel. Motion passes to deny, 6 to nothing. Item 3, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance of the Louisville City Council adopting standards of care for youth recreation programs or repealing and replacing Article 6 Standards of Care for Youth Recreational Programs of Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Louisville City Code with a new Article 6 Standards of Care for Youth Recreation Programs and setting forth other provisions applicable to the standards of care and further amending Chapter 10 Park and Rec, Parks and Recreation of the Louisville City Code by amending Article 1 in general to clarify the definition of city-approved league play or athletic event and amending Article 3 Parks and amending the areas where consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages on park property is allowed, providing for a savings clause, repealer, severability and effective date and declaring an emergency and consideration of approval of changes to City Policy Statement 4.0. Chapter 10 of the City Code of Ordinances defines guidelines and duties for the Parks Board, lists curfew, prohibits act, prohibited acts within the park system, parks and facilities where alcoholic beverages are allowed, creates local standards of care for youth programming and among other things. Several updates to the chapter were adopted by City Council on January 2022. With updates to standards of care for youth programming occurring in May 2023 and March 2024, in order to ensure compliance with updates to federal and state regulations, as well as keep pace with emerging recreation trends and address issues that compromise the integrity of the park system, the department reviews and proposes updates to the chapter regularly. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and policy statement as set forth in the caption above, and we do have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Stacy Anaya, available for questions. The public hearing on this is now open. I have no comment cards on this. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Counsel, please vote. The public hearing is now closed. It passed unanimously. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance and policy statement as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and no parentheticals. So City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council adopting standards of care for youth recreational programs by repealing and replacing Article 6 Standards of Care for Youth Recreation Programs of Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Louisville-
for Youth Recreation Programs of Chapter Ten Parks and Recreation of the Louisville City Code with a new Article Six Standards of Care for Youth Recreation Programs and setting forth other provisions applicable to the standards of care and further amending Chapter Ten Parks and Recreation of the Louisville City Code by amending Article One in general to clarify the definition of city-approved league play or athletic event and amending Article Three Parks and amending the areas where consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages on park property is allowed, providing for a savings clause, repealer, severability and an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item I, regular hearing, thirteen, consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way annuisements for the construction, access and maintenance of Midway Branch Force Main, the project, determining the public use and public necessity of such acquisition, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired in accordance with all laws, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property rights if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing savings and severability clauses and providing for an effective date. The city entered into a professional service agreement with Burkhoff Hendricks and Carter LP on April 15th, 2024 to design the Midway Branch Force Main project. The project is a critical infrastructure improvement that will enhance the city of Louisville's wastewater collection system to meet current and future growth demands. The proposed construction involves 23,000 linear feet of 30-inch sanitary sewer, sewer force main connecting the Midway Branch Lift Station to the city's wastewater treatment plant. To facilitate this, property rights from three parcels must be secured via donation, purchase or eminent domain. The resolution will enable the city manager and city attorney to negotiate property acquisition or initiate condemnation proceedings if necessary, ensuring compliance with applicable laws and resolutions. It is recommended that the City Council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion, which is prescribed by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 2206.053B. I move that the city of Louisville, Texas adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number I-13 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the properties described in depicted in Exhibit A attached to the resolution. Said descriptions and depictions being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, operation and maintenance of a sanitary sewer force main from the city of Louisville Midway Branch Lift Station near 559 Holford's Prairie to the city of Louisville Wastewater Treatment Plant at 897 Treatment Plant Road. This vote shall apply to all units of property which may be condemned. Counsel, if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city of Louisville, Texas adopt the resolution described as an agenda item number I-13 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the properties described and depicted in Exhibit A attached to the resolution. Said descriptions and depictions being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, operation and maintenance of a sanitary sewer force main from the city of Louisville Midway Branch Lift Station near 559 Holford's Prairie Road to the city of Louisville Wastewater Treatment Plant at 897 Treatment Plant Road. This vote shall apply to all units of property which may be condemned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item J, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no, no action will be taken. I have, uh, City Council and staff reports. Um, also in our packets, we have our quarterly investment report from October 1st through December 31st of 2024. Counsel Member Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some, uh, library activities for the week. Tween scene for children age nine to 12, Wednesday, February 19th, 4:30 to 5:30 Bennett Program Room, a ticket is required. Teen after-hours Hunger Games party for teens age 13 to 18, Friday, February 21st, 6:30 to 9, Bennett Children's Wing, registration and permission form required. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Member Toria?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have a number of items for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, uh, Hello Dolly, Hello Dolly, presented by the Christian Youth Theater of DFW, uh, February 21st through the 23rd and February 28th through March 2nd, with two shows on February 22nd and March 3rd. Acoustic rock songwriting challenge. Apparently the, the word, word of the challenge is rock. Uh, the songwriting challenge will be presented on February 28th. It's presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Always very, uh, these have to be original songs that are presented for, publicly for the first time at this performance. So, uh, there are some very talented songwriters, singer-songwriters in the area, and you'd be, you'd be pleasantly amazed if you attend on the 28th. And then as always, on Friday evenings, acoustic jam sessions, most of the people in this songwriter's challenge are on that, in the jam session, Fridays, again, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Activities, youth teen community musical theater workshop presented by our productions theater company on March 1st, and a number of exhibitions going on. First of all, 2025 four artists exhibitions, Nam, Bruno, Lee and Lee, presented by the city of Louisville, and that goes through March 4th. Building Bridges for Hope Toward Unity, presented by the MLK of North Texas, and that is through February 22nd. Uh, these are all paintings that were produced for the MLK celebration by LISD students, uh, and there are some tremendous pieces in there, so I'd encourage you to go out and see those. Then LISD 2024-25 Art Show High School, presented by Louisville Independent School District through February 22nd, and then LISD 2024-25 Art Show Middle School, presented by the Louisville Independent School District, February 28th through March 15th. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary's office?
No.
Anything, Richard?
No.
I'm done. Michelle?
Lake level. Just have the lake level 93.5%.
All right. Thanks, sir. Nothing. Chief? Chief? Counsel Member Kelly?
I think I've talked out, mayor.
Fair enough. Counsel Member Green?
It's past my bedtime and the caffeine's wearing off, so I'm good.
Counsel Member Jones?
I'll be brief. Richard's been called everything but a child of God today. Thank you for the hard work that you've done. You're appreciated.
Counsel Member Kate?
I would, but I was shushed earlier by the mayor.
I don't know if that was a shush more than, I guess we'll talk about it later.
We definitely will.
City Manager?
I was just going to say, good job, Richard.
Uh, I want to thank all the residents and everyone who came out to speak on all the different issues. Uh, it's, it's always challenging to, to manage everybody's wants and needs, so I appreciate all of the, the dialogue and the conversation. I know we have a better ordinance because of it, so, um, thank you, guys, and thank you to staff for, for working with so many varied interests. Uh, we do have, uh, some closed session tonight, so in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the rezoning of and/or redevelopment of approximately 20.11 acres legally described as Vista Ridge Edition, lots 3AR-1 and 3AR-2, Block J located on the southwest corner of State Highway 121 and Lake Vista Drive and Zone Light Industrial District, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.